We will return our meeting of April 20th to order. Excuse me. At this time, if we can rise for the invocation. And we received notice that the minister would not be there tonight, so Councilman Lingle.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for being with us this evening. Please help us as council members to make the right decisions for our city of Lompoc. Look after those around the world suffering in the many tragedies going around the world. Protect our soldiers, both here and abroad, as they protect us. Look after and protect our public safety officials, both police and fire, as they help protect us day and night. In your name we pray, amen.
Please say with me the fight for allegiance.
I fight for United States of America and to the commodity for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We did start this meeting over half an hour ago. We've been in closed session dealing with an item that was listed on the agenda and there was no reportable action taken at this time. It was an information and continuing review type of a situation. The next item on the agenda, and I'm sorry, the flu left me, the sore throat left me, but the voice hasn't come back yet, so I'm going to be a little bit difficult to speak tonight. And that's new for me. The presentation on April 7th proclamation was received by Hugh Thompson from the city of Lompoc for DMV Donate Life California Month. And on April 9th, I presented a proclamation to a representative of Montecito Union School for Montecito Union School Day in Lompoc. Couple of buses came up from the school to the mission, and we greeted them and welcomed them to the community of Lompoc. On the 15th of April, I presented the following proclamations at the Lompoc Elks Lodge evening, recognizing public safety persons throughout the valley. We honored Mauricio Calderon as the Lompoc Elks Police Officer of the Year for 2010. Ryan Ortiz honoring him as the Lompoc Elks Firefighter of the Year for our fire department. And we presented three awards for valor to Agent Joseph Stetz, to Officer David Lamar, to Officer Mark Powell. These are the three officers that went into a burning building and were very clearly responsible for saving the life of the woman they brought out from that building. They bring great credit on themselves and on their departments, and we would like to believe, and I'm sure we all believe, that every one of our police and fire would respond in the same way if the situation called for it. But I think we all pray that they know I'd never have to prove to us that they would respond in the same way. On April 20th, which was tonight, I presented a proclamation at the Lompoc Healthcare District mixer and award ceremony, declaring this a, piggybacking on the federal ruling for National Healthcare Volunteer Week. We also declared it Healthcare Volunteer Week in the city of Lompoc, and recognize that there are over 300 individuals that regularly give their time and effort to make the hospital work properly. Tonight, I have a couple of, I have a presentation. And I'd like to ask Pat Brady to come up, please. Pat is the administrator of the Good Samaritan Shelter Services, and this is a proclamation. This year, the KCOY 2010 Spring Food Drive will present most of the food that they collect in the Lompoc and Santa Maria areas to the shelter. Whereas the KCOY Spring Food Drive is the largest single food drive in Santa Barbara County, and over the past seven years, it has collected hundreds of thousands of pounds of food. And whereas participants with collection barrels include grocery stores, businesses, schools, civic organizations, churches, government agencies, local hospitals, media partners, including the Sun and Sunny Country Radio. And whereas hundreds come to KCOY studios to deliver canned goods on the final day of the food drive. And whereas KCOY is dedicated to the community and runs public service announcements for dozens of service groups in the area. And whereas Good Samaritan Shelter depends on community-minded individuals, organizations, and businesses like KCOY to donate food for people in need. And whereas through 16 programs, Good Samaritan Shelter provides emergency transitional and support services to more than 2,000 unduplicated individuals and families in need in Santa Barbara County each year. Now therefore, I, Mayor Mike Samenski, Mayor of the city of Lompoc, do proclaim April 16th through May 7th as KCOY 2010 Spring Food Drive in the month in the city of Lompoc, and I encourage all citizens to participate by collecting cans of food for donation through this food drive to the Good Samaritan Shelter. And I have signed this and affixed the seal of the city of Lompoc. And Pat, would you like to say some words?
Just a couple. Thank you. We appreciate this, and we thank KCOY. Here in Lompoc, we serve 22 women and their children every six months. These women are either pregnant or parenting and in recovery. So we right now have, I believe, 15 children in-house. They range in age from newborn to 12-years-old, 13-years-old, we've had even up as far as 14. We also run a detox program where we have people in for 14 days, and that's a six-bed coeducational. So this food that is collected in Lompoc and any donations, cash otherwise, will stay in Lompoc. So this will help us feed these people, because we provide for them. Some of them can pay, some of them have some kind of an income, but the majority of them are unable to pay. So this will help a lot, and we appreciate anything you do. There's actually a barrel out here in City Hall. The yellow barrels, you'll see them in the grocery stores, they're at probation, they're at the sheriff's substation, they're all around. So thank you very much.
And the second proclamation tonight. It's a proclamation recognizing National Crime Victims Rights Week. I'm sorry, I'd like to ask Jerry Macbeth, the deputy district attorney, and Sylvia Lozos, the victim witness program advocates, to come forward to receive. Aye. Whereas 21 million Americans suffer the indignity of crime each year and may experience emotional, physical, psychological, and financial harm as a result. And whereas a just society acknowledges crime's impact on individuals, families, and committees, communities, and ensures that victims are treated with fairness, dignity, and respect as they interact with the criminal practice system, criminal justice system. And whereas on November 4th, 2008, the state of California passed the Victims' Bill of Rights, amending the California Constitution to provide critical victims' rights. And whereas treating victims with dignity serves the public interest by engaging victims in the justice system, inspiring respect for public authorities, and promoting confidence in public safety. And whereas there is more to be done to advance these ideals, as too many victims are denied their right to attend trial, to present an impact statement on sentencing, or receive notice of the release of an offender. And whereas we must work to ensure fair treatment of crime victims by providing protections for child sexual assault victims, ordering and enforcing victims restitution from offenders, and notifying victims of their rights to compensation and services. And whereas the city of Lompoc is joining forces with victim services programs, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Santa Barbara County and America to raise awareness of victims' rights. Now therefore, I, Mike Samenski, Mayor of the city of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim the week of April 18th to the 24th as Crime Victims' Rights Week in the city of Lompoc, and express appreciation for those victims and survivors who have turned personal tragedy into motivational force to improve our response to victims of crime and to build a more just community. And again, witness, I have signed this on the 20th day of April and caused the city's seal to be affixed. I present that to you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Would you like to say something?
I have got to, Mike. Good evening, and Mr. Mayor, thank you, and esteemed members of the Lompoc City Council. I would like to formally introduce you to the district attorney's office victim witness advocate for the Lompoc jurisdiction, Ms. Sylvia Lozos. And I am Gerald Macbeth, the supervising deputy district attorney for the Lompoc jurisdiction. I want to thank all of you for joining crime victims and survivors, along with victim service providers and members of the criminal justice system across America to commemorate this National Crime Victims Week. This year's theme is fairness, dignity, and respect. And as the mayor told us in November of 2008, the people of the state of California approved Proposition 9, the Victims' Bill of Rights Act, which we call Marcy's Law. Marcy's Law is a response to an outcry by victims who continue to feel marginalized by a system which historically has been focused on the investigation, prosecution, and punishment of defendants with an emphasis on the right of the criminal defendant. And this measure, Marcy's Law, amended the California Constitution to strengthen and provide additional rights to victims. It serves as a beacon for each of us as we investigate and prosecute criminals by remembering and honoring the victims of these crimes. And the Constitution in Article 1, Section 28A2 was amended and reads as follows. Victims of crime are entitled to have the criminal justice system view criminal acts as serious threats to the safety and welfare of the people of California. Our office is committed to changing the attitudes that have given rise to these legislative changes by protecting and upholding victims' rights in the course of our service to some 3,500 victims annually. Since 1978, the Santa Barbara County District Attorney's Office has been the primary local provider of crime victim services. This office was one of the first in the county and in the state of California and the nation to offer a voice to victims. And now, more than three decades later, the Santa Barbara County District Attorney's Office has a well-established victim witness assistant program with a professional team of victim advocates like Ms. Lozos. The district attorney's office is committed to protecting and upholding victims' rights and protecting the safety of the citizens of our county. I invite all of you to attend our media outreach event commemorating National Crime Victims' Rights Week on this Friday, April 23rd, from 11:30 to 1:00, in the historic Sunken Gardens at the courthouse in Santa Barbara. Sheriff Bill Brown, Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisor Chair Janet Wolf, and District Attorney Ann Bramson will be presenting awards to victims and victim service providers. Thank you all very much.
The next item on the agenda is the city administrator executive director's status report.
Mr. Mayor, council and Lompoc citizens, there are two status items of information. First, the city clerk reports 96 new business tax certificates for the three-month period of January, February, and March. Second, the fire department reports 253 response calls for the month of March, seven fires, 172 rescue medical emergencies, and 74 other calls. And that is all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any staff requests and announcements?
Mr. Mayor, I have one announcement. At the council meeting of April 6th, council requested a status report on the city's weed abatement program. And this is carried out by the fire department. I've been advised that the department will mail out initial weed abatement notice to property owners this week, and weeds are to be abated by May 3rd. And following inspection, properties not in compliance will be agendized, listed and agendized for council meeting of May 18th. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel or redevelopment agency requests and announcements? Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, my, Ms. Raji.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'd like to announce the salute to the arts at Lompoc Valley Center. This is an Allen Hancock activity that is coming up on April 22nd, this coming Thursday, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Allen Hancock, the Valley Center, is sponsoring what they call a salute to the arts. It's being done in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, and I would encourage everybody to go and support this activity. I also like to mention a little bit about the Widners Festival. This past Saturday, it was a great success. I don't know really how many people came, and it would be nice to know, but it was a large crowd, it was a beautiful day. And I personally plan to call the Widners Association and basically say, "How did it go?", and "Thank you very much", and hope that you come back next year. Because I do know that our hotels were full. I do know that we had a great cold service. I'd like to thank the city for actually sponsoring the bus service that went all around the hotels and took guests into River Park, minimized a lot of the traffic and all of that. So I plan to contact the Widners Association and try to encourage them to come back next year. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Raji?
I have two things. On April 7th and 8th, the city administrator Laura Barcelona and council member Durham and myself attended a redevelopment agency workshop in Stockton. It was most informative. We learned everything about what a redevelopment agency is, where the money comes from, how it's financed, and it's especially meaningful because we're going to be talking about issuing a bond. And we learned a lot about what that's all about. So I wanted to thank the city for allowing us to go and get further education on that agent, on our agency. Also, right now, tentatively scheduled for May 4th is a review of the invocation wording, and I will be out of town on that day. And I would like to request, if it's all right with the other council members, to reschedule that item until May 18th. Because I'd like to be here when we talk about it.
No objection. That's ordered. At the end of your report. Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we all know, Relay for Life is coming up very shortly. We have a couple of teams in town that are doing an awful lot. To begin with, Hope Floats Team is doing a horseshoe tournament out at the prison along with a barbecue on, geez, repeat, this Saturday. And then we have, for the same team, Hope Floats, they have a wine tasting that they're going to have, along with a live auction and silent auction down at the riverbed. And for those of you, you know, it makes me feel good to say this about this person because she went to high school here, left, got an education, we're not saying she didn't get an education here, but she went to college and came back to support the community. Teresa Martinez Baker, her team, Dr. Tees Family Chiropractic, is holding a long ball contest on Saturday, the 24th, at Ryan Park, and it's $5 for kids and $10 for adults. And then the following day, they're having a softball tournament at Ryan Thompson Cabrio High School in Vandenberg Air Force Base fields. If you get a chance to, you know, support, you know, the Relay for Life people in this community, please do your best to do so because, you know, it's a good, warm feeling. And speaking of good, warm feelings, on Saturday, the 24th, I'm going to be at the Special Olympics Area Games at St. Joe High School from 9:00 to 3:00. You know, you get another new respect on life when you see these young men and women that are doing their best and showing you how grateful they are just for you being there. It warms your heart. So, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Lingle? You don't want to report on the softball game? I will, if you...
I'll report on the softball game. This past Sunday, council member, Martiners, Slugger, council member Martinor, Mayor Samenski, myself, Chief Dabney, other members of the police department and other members of the city, drove to Santa Maria to represent our lovely city in a celebrity softball game. And I'm happy to report that for a couple innings of the game, we were winning. Unfortunately, we had a person by the name of Robin Ventura. Anyone hear of Robin? Robin was on our team. Person on first base, Robin's up to bat, down by two, it's a sure thing, we could win this game. Well, unfortunately, and Robin, if you're out there, we love you, but Robin grounded out to the pitcher, and we ended up going by default, losing that game. But we had a great time, and it was all for a good cause. It was for the food bank, and we had a great time, so. The other thing, unfortunately, the district attorney's representatives left. I was, I ought to say this when they were here. Probably everyone knows that we have a race coming up for Santa Barbara District Attorney, and myself, along with probably many of you and some of the other council members, have had an opportunity to meet both these candidates. I'm very impressed with both. But one of the things I asked both these candidates, I want to make sure that they were going to keep the office, the district attorney's office, open in Lompoc. And they both, their responses were almost identical. Well, why not? It's the most efficient district attorney's office that they have in Santa Barbara County. I wish I could have said that while these people were here, because we should all be proud of the local representation that we get. They assured me that it's not because there's so much crime here. They assured me that there's definitely lower crime here because of our fantastic police department and the work of our district attorney's office. But they are the most efficient, they said. So I wish I could have said that while they were here. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And in the last couple of weeks, I have attended, I attended a going-away barbecue for Colonel Buck on the base, 30th Space Wing Commander. He will be missed. He was a very ineffective, very effective leader, and the base has prospered and met most of its schedules and done well under his leadership out there. He didn't have anything at all to do with the launch being delayed today. It was strictly weather. And I also attended a League of Cities meeting in Ontario in which about 150 mayors, council members from all over the state spent the day discussing the impact of the environmental regs in California on cities, the costs. You all may remember that when we raised our trash collection rates, it was, in many cases, much of the reason for that was to comply with mandates that the state have laid on us under the guise of environmental protection. The League Cities Board of Directors asked, split the group into four parts, and asked for recommendations as to whether or not they should support the initiative this year or support legislation to suspend some of the actions that are costing very much. The League Board hasn't assimilated all of the advice that was received and taken a position yet, but it was interesting to hear the views from all over the state on the impact of these bills on not only businesses, as they're claimed to be job killers, but also on cities themselves, having to take actions right now that they can't afford when we're furloughing people and laying off people and doing other things in the city. So I'll look for that position soon. And that's all I have. The next item on the agenda is oral communications. At this time, you have five minutes to speak on items. If you're going to, if it's something that's on the agenda, we would prefer you wait. You will be given a chance to speak at that time. If it's something that's not on the agenda, we want to hear from you at this time. If you can't wait, or if you can't stay with us later on, until later on in the evening, and you want to speak on an item that comes up later on in the evening, you can speak at this time, but then we will ask you not to speak when the item comes before us. Have five minutes, watch the lights.
Pat Brady, Mayor and council members, I wanted to thank you all that were there for your participation in the softball game. You all did well, including Chief Dabney and some of his staff. I know you wanted to win, Tim. Next year. This is the third year that Tim has been on the team. I just wanted to correct Bob, that he was playing, actually representing Good Samaritan in Lompoc, and we were playing for the food drive. This was part of KCOY's media blitz for all of us. They all did a great job, Cecilia. You are a brave lady. She had not ever played before, and she did a great job. So thank you all again. It was fun, and I hope you're ready for next year. Were you sore, Bob?
My hand.
Uh-huh, yeah. Thank you.
And Ms. Brady, I understand the empire was.
I have a video. If you'd like the slideshow, if you'd like to see things, okay. Thanks.
Now, one of the members of the team representing Lompoc was Jim Byrne, the weatherman from KCOY. And if he had just called for rain after the fifth inning, we would have won, because we were ahead at that time. If we could have canceled the game, but he didn't come through for us. Okay, oral communications, continue.
Hi. My name is Elizabeth Ellis Allday, and I live at 508 South O Place, and this has nothing to do with what's on the agenda. This is something me and my neighbors have just recently discovered, and I'm going to read what I came up with. So Mayor and council members, I have lived at 508 South O Place for the past 26 years. And last week, I pulled into my driveway and I noticed a large, this is regarding fiber optic wires. I pulled into my driveway, I noticed a large utility pole in my neighbor's backyard. My first thought, well, what's the county doing back there? This, you know, we, why is there a utility pole in the easement when we have underground wiring on the six houses from where I live at 508 South O, all the way up to the top where Howdy Spicer lives? Well, it's not the county. I found out that the city of Lompoc has put a utility pole where there's no utility poles. Well, ever, until now. I spoke to Steve Sims, and he told me that, yes, we will now have wires in our backyards. Why? Shouldn't this wiring be placed like our other utilities underground? Placing these wires will decrease our property values and obstruct the views we have of the beautiful Lompoc Hills. The houses on the street have... The houses on the street have the best views. I have some pictures I'd love to share with you, to show you when you look out there, what you see. Now, thanks to the city of Lompoc, our views are going to be obstructed with wires. Placing these wires will decrease our property values and obstruct the views. What about safety? During the 1990 El Nino, three of the utility poles from 428 to 504 South O Place had to be replaced due to wind damage back in the 1990s. I understand the need for progress, but these utilities need to be placed underground. No one has notified us that this was going to be happening. It's sad to know that someone can just come into your backyard and do whatever they want when they want to. It's a very sad day for me. Please, anything you can help me and my neighbors understand why these wires cannot be placed underground would be appreciated. I've talked to my neighbors, I have support from some of my neighbors who are here today, who, you know, what my question to you, if this was your backyard, how would you feel? What would you do? What would you want to happen? That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak at this time?
Dwayne Holdong, Mayor, Councilmember. I want to follow up on Councilmember Martner's comments. It was an excellent day on Saturday, the people loved it. I rode the bus in and I rode the bus out, talking to people on the bus, and they loved being in Lompoc, the hotels were full. My suggestion on the letter, all five of you should sign it, that let them know that Lompoc wants them back. Saturday was once they go with it real bad, and they started there in 1982, but they've got to find 55 acres at least to put this together. And what we have is 95 acres, and if it rains on Friday, you could still go out there and not get in the mud like we used to at the old facilities. So, we have a lot to offer, but I think if the Vintners Association really realizes that the city of Lompoc wants them and wants them here, because like you said, the hotels were full, and they were, after the event, if you drove up and downtown, they're walking all over town, eating at all the restaurants in town, they didn't get filled up completely. So, I think it's an excellent idea, but my only suggestion is that all five of you should sign the letter or have a record, however it is, that Jim Philick then will understand that really Lompoc wants you here, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holdong.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Joyce Howerton, Lompoc. I just would like to invite all of you and the staff and anyone watching this, tomorrow night, the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center is having their open house from 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock, so you can come and see their new facility and talk to the staff and volunteers about what they're doing around rape and sexual assault and child abuse. They're directly across the street from City Hall on East Ocean Avenue, so 4:00 to 6:00 tomorrow night.
Thank you, Ms. Howerton. Is there anyone else who wants to speak at this time? Seat.
I made two copies for the council. Got a budget. My name's John Spooner, and I'm a retired vet, also a producer and host of First Amendment Free Speech Zone, Truth and Fact. And I received an email yesterday, which is the second time I've received it, and this, I think is very appropriate at this time. The first time I received it, I just was amazed about the truth in it, but it's, it was written by a 15-year-old student in Arizona, and it's about the new Pledge of Allegiance. And he needs to be celebrated for his bravery in the face of intimidation and scorn from his classmates and probably teachers, prayer and strong backbones will be needed in the coming months and years to preserve our religious and many other freedoms. And this new Pledge of Allegiance, since the Pledge of Allegiance and the Lord's Prayer are not allowed in most public schools anymore, because the word God, if the word God is mentioned, a kid in Arizona wrote the attached, "New school prayer. Now I sit me down in a school," or in Lompoc, "where the praying is against the rule, for this great nation under God finds mention of Him very odd. If Scripture now, the class recites, it violates the Bill of Rights. And any time I bow my head, or my head I bow, becomes a federal matter now. Our hair can be purple, orange, and green, that's no offense, it's the freedom scheme. The law is specific, the laws precise, prayers spoken aloud are serious vice. For praying in a public hall might offend someone with no faith at all. In silence alone, we must meditate. Our God's name is prohibited by the state. We're allowed to cuss and dress like freaks, pierce our noses, tongues, and cheeks. There are outlawed guns, but first the Bible. To quote the Good Book, may be liable. We can elect a pregnant senior queen, and the unwed daddy are senior king. It's inappropriate to teach right from wrong. We're taught that such judgments do not belong. We can get our condoms and birth controls, study witchcraft, vampires and totem poles, but Ten Commandments are not allowed. No word of God must reach this crowd. It's scary here, I must confess, when the chaos reigns and the schools a mess. So, Lord, this silent plea I make, should I be shot, my soul, please take. Amen." And this was sent by a former Lompoc resident in Arizona. And the first time I read it, about several months ago, I thought it was very, very true. And this time, I read it from Ben Coleman, I think it was very appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spooner. Is anyone else at this time?
100 questions.
Seeing no one rise, we'll bring it back to the council. I'll ask, I'd like to ask staff for a report on the utility pole, addressing the, if you can get something for us, addressing the issue there. And I'd like to suggest that maybe Arlene and the Economic Development Department prepare an appropriate resolution or something to the visitors, the Vintners Festival, for all of us to take action. The next, excuse me, the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar will be done with one motion. I asked the council what your wishes are with respect to the four items listed.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the consent calendar.
New motion?
I second it.
Second. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, let's cast our vote. That passes. Appointments, we have an appointment with the Public Safety Commission for one expired term ending 12/20, the month of December this year, and we have an application.
Yes, Mr. -- oh, I'm sorry, pardon.
Is, well, Bob, you want to make the...
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I move that we, I'm recommending that we appoint Chris Braxton to the unexpired term of Public Safety Commissioner. Mr. Braxton has a great deal of experience in public safety, and he is more than willing to serve. That's my recommendation.
Is Mr. Braxton here tonight? I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Martner, do you have a comment?
Just a correction. I, my understanding is that he's an expired term until 2012, isn't it?
That's correct, and I'm sorry I asked Ms. Ellis.
Just make the correction, please, thank you.
Thank you. What are the wishes of the council on the item before us?
Well, I'll second Councilmember Lingle's.
Motion is amended.
Motion, yes, as amended.
Motion and second. No other comments, let's cast our vote. That passes unanimously. Mr. Braxton is a member, is now a member of the Public Safety Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to move on to item number six, which is hearing to consider Measure A, Local Program of Projects for fiscal year 2010, 2011 through 2014, 2015.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, and the public. Got a short PowerPoint presentation, and while Donna hands out those copies, I'll give you a brief background to Measure A. Measure A is the continuation of Measure D, which was a half-cent transportation sales tax passed in 1989. Interesting, it only passed by a 55% majority in '89, and I don't believe it actually passed in the Lompoc Valley by more than 50%, so it was fairly controversial. But it was very important to the transportation infrastructure in Lompoc. It provided necessary funding to allow us to match and leverage federal funds. As you know, federal funds usually require a local match, and that's largely the problem with agencies that don't have a self-help sales tax, is to come up with general fund revenues to match these grants. Measure D sunset in 2010, and Measure A was then proposed to continue that sales tax further. And now getting into Measure A. If I can get this to work. There we go. Okay, so Measure A, what is Measure A? Half-cent sales tax approved countywide in 2008, approved by a 75% majority, which is a huge change from the 1989 level, and that is the number in Lompoc. So, the Lompoc citizens voted to approve this sales tax by 75%. So, I think that shows how much they value the transportation infrastructure and the importance they placed on maintaining that facility. Estimated generate over $1 billion over the next 30 years countywide. 30-year program expiring in 2040, and there was three components to Measure A investment plan. The 101 widening in Santa Barbara came off the top, and then there's a North County and a South County program with a series of projects for each of the local agencies. So, this is my good news slide. The good news is, it did pass, and we were able to continue to fund our transportation infrastructure. Approximately $65 million over the 30 years will be provided to Lompoc. And the Street and Urban Forestry Division rely very heavily on this funding, so without Measure A, these divisions would have been hurting. Not sure what would have happened, but good news is, it passed. These are very flexible funds also, very few strings attached to these. Council is free to use these on just about any purpose related to the streets. And as you can see, we use them for street trimming trees along the parkway, filling potholes, just about anything related to our street infrastructure. This is my challenges slide. Unfortunately, the, as the economy is down, so is the tax revenue, and we're about $300,000, $330,000 short of what we used to see in the Measure D years. And this is the first year that we're programming money in Measure A. So, this is kind of the first time that we've been able to see what the real revenues are going to be, and I'll get to what the real revenues are in a couple slides. Over the next five years, we estimate that approximately 80% of all of the Measure A revenue will need to be used for short-term maintenance. This is a definite change from the past. We were lucky enough to have enough revenue for larger capital projects, overlays and rehabilitations that extend the useful life of the pavement for more than 10 years. What I'm calling short-term maintenance are the, you know, the every-year street trimming, the every winter pothole filling, those type of things. The other part that we're struggling with is TDA, which provides a portion of the street funds, is being used mostly for transit purposes now. You'll see later on tonight, there's an item on the agenda to program the TDA funds, and you'll see that the amount that's going to be going for streets purposes is about $350,000. Historically, that's been much higher in the $700,000 range. So, that's another challenge that we'll need to deal with in the next budget. So, the end result is the revenue available for larger capital projects, these overlays and rehabilitations, will be reduced compared with previous years. This is the five-year program of projects. This is the, one of the items that we're asking you to approve. This document then is sent to SB CAG for inclusion in the countywide program of projects and will also be approved by SB CAG at their board meeting. If we just take the top of this slide, the categories, street maintenance, engineering, and urban forestry are the short-term, kind of year-to-year maintenance categories. So, those, that pays the staff and salaries for those divisions. The engineering is the support to the street maintenance, but the street maintenance and urban forestry categories are directly staff, salaries, and benefits. And you'll see, program year 1011, we've programmed about $1.6 million to support that, those budgets. And that's, that takes us through the end of this fiscal year. Moving forward in the future fiscal years, we've anticipated slight reductions to those categories that we'll need to be dealing with in the, as the budget negotiations go forward, and we're putting those budgets together. A new category is the alternative transportation part of the slide down at the bottom. Measure A does require that a portion of our revenue be spent on alternative transportation, and we're showing, we're suggesting that it be spent on bike and pedestrian facility maintenance. This is maintenance that we largely do on the sidewalks, normal trip-and-fall type maintenance where we grind down the sidewalks that have been lifted, replace panels that we have to, and we need to continue doing that. So, this is, this is what we're showing as far as our 15% contribution. And so, over the next five years, we project that Measure A will provide $9.5 million, and we're going to program 15% to alternative transportation, or $1.4 million. So, staff recommendation is that we hold a public hearing, take input on the Measure A local program of projects, city council make any necessary changes, and then adopt Resolution 562710, and we'll then send it on to SB CAG. And I'm Larry Bean, Public Works Director, or myself are both available for questions on this item.
Thank you, Mr. McKeon. Before we take in public testimony, would the council have any questions? Councilmember Rouge?
Yes, I do. Mr. McKeon, you already said that the estimated figures coming in are lower than what's anticipated at this point in time. So, the budget you've presented, does that, is that looking, is that making, taking into account that the funds coming in will be lower than what's anticipated?
That's correct. So, what we focused on, the first priority was funding the existing, the budget as approved by the city council. What was not left over was money for annual overlays and rehabilitations. Now, we're fortunate, this year, we have a stimulus project that was 100% funded by federal funds, that will provide that, our kind of normal, every-year overlay project. So... So we're okay through the end of this budget in terms of that capital. That kind of replaced the capital that Measure A would have provided. But in fiscal year 1011, we're showing no Measure A revenue in overlays and rehabilitation. It all goes into the funding, the salaries and benefits.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Lingual.
Thank you. This is similar to Councilmember Rouge's questions. The $9.5 million budget you're projecting, is that looking at a flat over the next five years increment? Or is it somewhat projecting a slight increase over the next five years?
That's a good question. That's provided by SB CAG in their modeling of the next five years' tax revenue. I know it's fairly sophisticated because in year three, it goes, in fact, if we can, maybe I'll back it up here a couple slides here. If that works. One more. There we go. You'll notice, in year one, we started at about 1.8 as our revenue, and then it goes down to 1.4 in year three. That's when the bond sale for the overall Measure A program is sold. And that's why our revenue goes way down. There's the payment on the bond proceeds gets spread out over all the program of projects. So I don't know exactly how they came up with the estimates, but these were provided by SB CAG.
It's not a guarantee we're going to get to 9.5.
Absolutely not. No. In fact, I return every year to do this. So we'll have a moving estimate every year.
And then, let's say it goes up by 3% or down by 3%. Would all items be adjusted by the appropriate amount, or how would we adjust our budget?
That's right. Every year, I'll come back for your consideration for the next five years. And we make a new program of projects every year based on five years out. So it's a moving estimate, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
No other questions. We will take public testimony at this time. Please come up to the podium and state your name and your place of residence. And you have five minutes. And watch the lights, please.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Paul Rosso. I live on Santa Clara Drive in Lompoke. Attachment number one to Resolution 5627, parent 10, is unacceptable. And I'm only going to use fiscal year 1011 alone because it allocates $566,000 to street tree program and $286,000 to bike and pedestrian facilities, a total of $853,000, while street maintenance is $833,000. Consider less. It is less. Now, how are these funds used? And I'm only talking about street maintenance. And these are only examples I've seen in the city. First of all, I'm a 40-year resident of the city, and I love Lompoke. But, and only illustrative. Poor and inefficient methods of ensoling sidewalks on North H Street and Southeast Street. I think we have to look at contracting these things out. Poor and inefficient methods of patching, piecemeal, and yet, the street with the most potholes in the city, Southeast Street, which is right out here, you can go look at it. This resolution, as stated, should not be approved, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosso.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. Sorry, I lost your voice. My name is John Lynn. I live in the city of Lompoke. I'd like to talk to you for a moment about our funding priorities. The policy you're considering today will guide our street funding for the next five years. According to the SB CAG website, over 80% of the Measure D funds not set up for alternate transportation were used by, in the other agencies, were used for street repairs. Lompoke has been closer to 50%, so we use a smaller percentage of our funds. After the 30% for urban forestry and 16% for bicycle and pedestrian routes, it leaves us 54% for street repairs. Each year, the condition of our streets becomes worse, and it's time to reconsider our funding priorities. First, urban forestry has long had a list of high-maintenance trees in the city that require more frequent trimming. We must today begin the process of removing 20% of these trees each year with the objective of cutting our tree maintenance costs in half over a five-year period. Secondly, we must install drought-tolerant, very-low-maintenance median plantings to minimize maintenance. The Beautification Commission, with the help of local landscape contractors and arborists, can certainly accomplish this at no cost to the city. Third, in each plan year, we must allocate at least 50% of the available repair funds to slurry and overlay and repaving. Streets in this town are becoming a disgrace. Laurel Avenue east of 7th Street is like a sea of potholes. The 6th and 7th block of F Street are just horrible. Today, you're setting priorities for street work, and that's what the voters were sold when they voted on this. That's what 75% of us voted for. I also believe that this council should look at Measure D, non-street repair projects approved last summer. None have been begun, and they should be reconsidered. In particular, the council should act to cancel the downtown sidewalk paver project around the LH CDC properties, as that project is not progressing. Remember, this is priority setting. Consider alternatives, make changes before the snowball starts downhill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Good evening. Harry Keim, Lompoke, California, 422 South F. Our street is really falling apart, too. I would like to see a list, or at least something to the public that says, okay, guess what? We're going to get to your street this time. And that way, we know when they're actually going to do it. Because when they did that little test plot up here on, I forget which street it is. There's one over. They did a contact, or somebody did a test plot. And it looked really good, then nothing else happened after that. So my concern is just wanting to know when they might actually fix our street. Our street's literally falling apart on South F. So I don't know. I would just like the public to have an idea when they might be served. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keim.
Dave Pierce. I live in Lompoke. I'm really glad that this passed, and I'm glad the people of Lompoke saw the wisdom of voting this in. And I'm afraid that the idea that it would be used to repair streets is probably what most people were thinking. Unfortunately, we've gone for years now making no plans to limit or reduce the amount of traffic on the streets. Instead, it's growing astronomically, and traffic jams are becoming common. And that's partly because the planning that we've gone through has not provided adequately for traffic growth along with the other kinds of growth. The wise strategy would be to come up with alternative transportation modes to get as many vehicles off the road as possible so that we can live with the capacity of our streets as they are and maybe not have them fall apart before our very eyes. Later in the agenda, there's the TDA funding that's supposed to be transportation development funding earmarked for putting in alternative transportation. For years, Lompoke has used that money to repair roads rather than developing alternative transportation to reduce the amount of traffic on the roads and to keep them in better shape. Unfortunately, this TDA funding is proposed, I should say fortunately, a good part of it is proposed for doing things that will improve the picture, but 20% of it is still being used for road repairs. An amount equal to what's on this page will be later on your agenda, also continuing road repairs. I think it's really unwise to use that transportation development money to repair roads when we should be using it to get cars off the road. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Seeing no one rise, we'll bring it back to the council. Oh, sorry. Yes, absolutely.
David Grill. I live on River View Terrace. It strikes me, I don't know any of the details about this proposal and all that money, but what I do see is an opportunity to take the road less traveled. It was a big book when it came out, and it has become a challenge to people who think and plan to look at the road less traveled, and that would be the bike and pedestrian facilities. That is a choice that we get to fund or not. And we can dedicate these funds, which are an investment. And we can invest in being more of the same, or we can invest in something different. I hope that all of you have taken some time to visit the new, what I call the new bicycle trail out on Riverside Drive. I think that cost about $1 million. I'm not sure about that. If that trail was completely encompassing the outer perimeter of Lompoke, it would be in the neighborhood of 13 miles. 13 miles is half a marathon. So two laps is a marathon. I hear very much about Lompoke wanting new business and new money coming into town. So if one systematically funded the extension of this bicycle path where the first mile and a half is now complete, after a period of time, we would have a 13-mile track that could fund athletic events such as half-marathons, full-marathons, bicycle rides such as the Solvang Sentry. The Solvang Sentry is very, very successful in bringing tourist dollars to town for them. We can do that, too. And one way to go in that direction is to have this sort of very nice path that it's all-weather. It's an investment in something new, something different, something to make us distinctive. So I wouldn't underestimate the value of this bicycle path. As David said, he thinks of it in terms of people using that as alternate transportation, getting back and forth to work or school. And I say, that's possible, but I like to do two birds with one stone, to do two things with one investment. And we can turn that very same facility into a tourist attraction that could bring just as much money to town as this past wine festival has been. So we need to think about taking a risk, taking a chance, doing something different, enduring the potholes for a time in order to step out of our very, very boring routine mold that we've been in for so very long. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grill. Seeing no one rise, we'll take it back into the council. Any comments from the council? Councilmember Lingual.
Thank you. Mr. McKeon. What if we did, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Grill for his comments on alternate transportation. I mean, it is something we should all be striving for, bicycling, walking. Unfortunately, it's a real tough task to get Americans out of our automobiles, but it's something we should all be striving for. If we were to look at, I want to go back to the roads. If we want to put, excuse me, Mr. Grill, but if we want to put more attention to the potholes, how would you propose we do that? And where would we take it from? Because I agree with people, our streets are in need of repair, and I think you'll agree that as well.
Oh, absolutely. We're facing a real challenge. So we don't have the money we would like to have to upgrade everyone's streets. And we have what's called a pavement management system that helps us prioritize what streets get paved at what time. And we tend to focus on the high-volume streets. Those get taken care of first. And some of the residential streets that are the very low-volume streets are approaching 25 years old and haven't had a lot of maintenance done to them. So the story that I told you before is we're short of revenue. We're short of revenue both in TDA and Measure A. And it's going to be a challenge in the next budget to figure out what the priorities will be. How to come up with more money for maintenance? You know, it's a zero-sum game. We'd have to cut some of the other, you know, urban forestry. You'd have to cut out, you can't cut the alternative transportation because we have to spend 15% on that. So there's only four categories up there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I would like to make a couple of comments regarding the public input. I would like to see the possibility, if actually, the street maintenance can publish a type of a schedule that would basically alert the residents as to where and when the repairs are coming, if there are any repairs. And this is basically on Mr. Keim's comment. I think it would be useful if some kind of a schedule can be published, whether it's on the website or whether it's, you know, on the bulletin board. If you have a schedule, I assume you do have a schedule.
Did you say for the urban forestry?
No, no, for the repairs.
Or street repairs, sure, okay.
What is the plan? When is it going to be done? What streets are going to be affected? I think it would be useful that we inform the public on that. So if that's possible, I would like to see the staff work on that. The other comments regarding the bike trail, I think that's a fantastic idea. If we could differentiate Lompoke in some way and say, here you have, you know, you have a track that goes around the city for X number of miles and so forth. I think like with any of these projects, we need to get a group of residents interested in it, look for a proposal, look for a project, and bring it up to the council. Perhaps talk with the staff as to where potential funding can come from. But I really would like to encourage residents to look into projects like that and think out of the box because I think it does have business opportunities for the town. I don't, yes, councilmember Rouge?
Yeah, I was just looking at my notes. Mr. Rosso mentioned also, Kevin, about contracting out for street repair. And in the staff report, that's what we do, right?
Well, the Street Division does do an awful lot of repairs in-house. We also, we do bid our capital projects. And those are the longer-term overlays and rehabilitation that extend the useful life more than 10 years. So the potholes and the shorter-term maintenance is, well, I don't want to say 100%, but it's largely done in-house. And I believe there may be some union rules regarding contracting out existing work from the Street Division. But we do have the capital portion that's bid out every year, and there's opportunities for that there.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
What are the council wishes?
Seeing nobody jump. I don't know how many of you have seen what Mr. Grill was talking about as far as the bike ride from, and by the way, it's not a bike ride, it is a bike race. I don't care what you say. They don't ride single or double. They take the entire road. And if you were to try to put 5,000 people on any bike trail that we could build, the hospital isn't big enough. So, but anyway. I understand the concerns and the information that's been, you know, brought forward. But I also know that we need to take action because our streets are terrible and getting worse. So I make a recommendation that we go with staff recommendations, A through B, I'm sorry, A through C.
I'll second that. Any comments? Mayor?
Yes, I support the motion. I know it looks like a lot of money is being spent in the urban forestry, street tree program. But over the past but over the past number of years, every time there's a major storm like we have had this year, watch the news at night, and you'll see streets closed in other areas, you'll see major trees down, you'll see power outages. You very seldom see those reported in the Lompoc Valley. We have a good urban forestry and a good program of maintaining those trees so that they are attractive, but at the same time, they don't get overgrown, they don't blow into the wires, they don't fall and cause problems. I got a call last week from someone who was quite concerned about a full-grown tree that was cut down adjacent to Fillmore School. A large branch fell off that tree, and examination of the tree showed that the other branches were, had stress cracks and had other features where it looked like with the unbalanced tree that the, it caused a hazard to the kids underneath it. So we have the Urban Forestry Division went out and took that tree out completely to prevent a hazardous situation for the kids at school. So it's, I support, I think that the, I think that the allocation here is based on history and an analysis of what we can spend. I would support listing the streets that are due for maintenance in advance so that the people, if we can do that, so people know my street has potholes, big ones, and I don't know how long, how many years before you get around to that one, and I'd like to know. But I think the public also has to be aware that most of the money that's available for roads is really shrinking. The sales tax is down, we see that in, we see that in all of our revenue sources. The federal and state taxes were not percentages, they were fixed-dollar amounts and haven't been raised in, what, 20 years? 16 cents a gallon 20 years ago to go into highways versus 16 cents a gallon today, when the cars at 20 years ago were averaging 12 miles a gallon, and today they're averaging 28. They're driving twice as hard on the roads, and that 16 cents doesn't go near where it did in those days. So it is, it is a major, major struggle to try to take the limited money we have. And I support the plans submitted, because it's prepared by our street department that's been studying the issues each year, that does their best each year to respond to where the needs are. And I'm not ready to try to put an alternate plan, a funding plan together, based on just what I, what I know about the conditions in the town. I support the motion.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. Are we ready to vote, or do we need any further comments?
Do I need to make an amendment to your recommendation, Mayor Portem, about the staff having the report?
Public schedule, I don't think we need an amendment. I think that would be just, the staff will.
Thank you.
Okay. So the motion remains. Let's vote. And it passes. Moving on to, is there any request for breaks at this time, or should we go to the next agenda item? Let's take a quick break of five minutes. Okay.
I have a flash drive. This is, I have three slides on it. Thank you, everybody. We're going to get going again. We're moving on to unfinished business, item, agenda item number seven, application approval for California Department of Parks and Recreation Off-Highway Vehicle Grant Resolution. This is a continuation from the April 6 city council meeting. Chief, please.
Thank you, Mayor Portem, mayor, city council members, members of the public. It's my pleasure to be with you again this evening. Mayor, I'm sorry you lost your voice screaming so loud at the softball game. I think you were screaming at Lingle to run, run, run. And that's the first time you're not referring to a public office. The application and the resolution that's before you is the same as what was brought before you in the last city council meeting. The resolution itself is unaltered, and you will notice in the staff report, there have been some additions, some clarifications that were made pursuant to the discussions in the last city council meeting. And I included, for your reference, various state laws, vehicle code sections, penal code sections, county ordinances, and city ordinances that are currently in existence. The other change to the proposal is that the budget for the matching part of the grant has been fine-tuned to reduce that amount so that it's more in line with the 25% match. And as you notice in the notations in the grant proposal, that most of the in-kind match, in fact, the largest part of the in-kind match is either accounted for in the existing budget is in-kind costs and staff, staff work, or equipment that's already in inventory, and the rules of the grant allow us to use already existing equipment as inventory for part of the match. The Lompoc Police Department and the Parks and Recreation Department are not asking the city council to create or change any law regarding off-road, off-highway vehicles. This proposal is brought to you collaboratively by these two departments under the council's direction to seek funding sources to support and enhance the city's existing operations. The Lompoc Police Department and the Lompoc Parks and Recreation Department are in full support of the development of a designated off-highway vehicle recreation area or park, as was proposed at the last council meeting. However, this grant opportunity is provided for the purpose of education and enforcement of existing OHV laws. So in conclusion, no new law or ordinance or prohibition is being requested. Park rangers and police officers will continue to respond to calls for service pertaining to the multipurpose bike trail in the San Ynez Riverbed area and take enforcement action as appropriate whether or not this grant application is approved. This proposal simply adds the staff hours in a vehicle to enhance the city's prevention and enforcement effort. And the Lompoc Police Department and the Lompoc Parks and Recreation Department fully support the development of an off-road, off-highway vehicle recreational park. With that said, the recommendation is that the city council adopt Resolution 5625/10, approving the grant application submitted by the Lompoc Police Department to the California Department of Parks and Recreation in the amount of $164,252 to enhance public education, crime prevention, and enforcement of laws related to off-highway vehicle use on the City of Lompoc Riverbend Multipurpose Bike Trail and other city property in the San Ynez Riverbed, and authorize the city administrator and the chief of police or his designee to accept and administer the California Department of Parks and Recreation grant if awarded. And I'm available for any questions, should you have any.
Thank you, Chief Dabney. Do we have any questions for the chief at this time? Councilmember?
It's not for the chief, I don't know when to do this. We were handed a directive from our city attorney, and I didn't know when we wanted to bring that up.
If I may, through the mayor, I don't know that your city attorney gave you directives, but I did give you some advice.
Okay, I don't know what to call a piece of paper with stuff on it.
Memo.
The purpose of the, the purpose of the memo that I gave you was, in an effort to comply with what the council had asked, which was some input from me on the points that were raised by some of the public at the last meeting. And to be brief, the research that I did indicates that the city, as I said before, and as the chief had indicated before, that the city and the county actually have full authority to regulate the use of the property that we're talking about, meaning permitting or not permitting off-highway vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we take public comment? Let's move on into the public comment period. Please pay attention to the lights. You are being given three minutes, is that correct, or five? Five, okay, so you have five minutes. If there is going to be a lot of people that will talk, I would request that you stand on a line so we move the process forward, as I expect that we will have a lot of speakers. Thank you very much. Please state your name and your place of residence, and do watch the lights. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Portem, mayor, and members of the council. Ralph Harmon, Lompoc. First, I really would like to commend Chief Dabney on his staff report. I thought it was very clear, very concise, and it certainly cleared up a lot of issues that were raised at the last meeting. But your job tonight is not to discuss the merits of off-road vehicles, the establishment of an off-road vehicle park, or other discussions away from the subject of the agendasized matter, to wit, an application for a grant to secure tools necessary for the police department to enforce the rules and regulations, the laws as they are written, and that is all. Failing to approve this grant, or any other grant, places the council in the position of micromanaging the police department, and makes the assumption that the council has more knowledge of law enforcement than the paid professionals on our staff. I, for one, support the work of Chief Dabney and his staff, and condemn, commend them for seeking out grants. Without these grants, which are up for grabs by almost every law enforcement entity in the state of California, we place our police officers at a disadvantage, and this we cannot allow to happen. The council cannot, on one hand, encourage the chief to seek grants, and then, on the other hand, tell his department, no, we don't want that grant, or this grant, or the next grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon.
David Grill, I live on Riverview Terrace. I'd not known that the grant was limited to just the riverbed and Riverbend Park until it's come up tonight, so I have to tailor my thinking a little bit as I speak. These all-terrain vehicles, quad runners, whatever they are, they're not something that we're familiar with as far as owning them and using them in this particular way. So I don't think that we should be narrow-minded as to what we think we'll do with them. So I don't think that we should be narrow-minded as to what we think we'll do with them. I think that they're very adaptable vehicles, and there may be a lot of circumstances where we find them more useful, or more needed, as situations come up and take us by surprise. How do we get to people who have hiking accidents when the ambulances cannot get there? We had an airplane crash up on Sweeney Road a few years back. If a plane goes down, we like to think about our airport, but, you know, the planes do crash sometimes. How do we get to that, that crash? We had one go down in Big E's Farm Field to the north. Ambulance might have had a hard time driving out in that very soft dirt. Supporting brush fires, you know, we had a brush fire to the south a couple of years ago, and we got lucky on that, it was put out so quickly. But surely, it's a part of the natural environment. We will burn, and then the all-terrain vehicles can be very useful in hauling hoses, or just simply hauling drinking water to the firefighters. How do we go about finding a lost child out in the brush? How do we do that? How about when a senior citizen who is limited by dementia of some sort, they wander out, out in the fields, they're lost, how do we go find them? How do we go about finding escaped prisoners when they pass through our way? There are a lot of possibilities that we just don't necessarily think about automatically. You know, we've, we've had this, I think, a lot of people have had a very narrow focus about, what are you going to do with these ATVs? But there are a lot of other possibilities. They just are a very general-purpose adaptable tool that I think that they're, they're good for us. Recently, in my neighborhood, which is right there on Riverside Drive, there was a very strong rumor about a rabid dog. I never, had it proven to me that it did or did not exist, but my neighbors say they saw the foaming of the mouth, and they say animal reg came out and got that dog. Well, what happens if the dogs don't cooperate? You know, if the dogs run out in the brush, how are you going to chase them down? So again, these ATVs, I think, are very useful. I always try to think in terms of bringing more money to town. The Audubon Society does birding here, and the ATVs could assist them in promoting tourism. And then finally, when we get that wind turbine park, we're going to need to use something to monitor the environment. That may be out of the jurisdiction, out of, out of the territory, I don't know, but ultimately, we're going to have to find out the effect of that wind turbine anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grill.
Harry Keim, Lompoc, California. I'm here to talk about the, I support the off-road vehicle grant. The reason why, I was against it at first, because my sons used to ride in the riverbed. And I used to take them there, I've been here since 1978. Well, the important, the point I want to make is, they had a good time, we did it illegal. You know, it's like, oh, yeah, okay. But what we did in that time was, I told my sons, out of respect for the people who live in Lompoc, you could only go to the bridge on H, and anywhere from there going west on the riverbed, so that they don't bother people who live here. You know, see, people wouldn't get up in arms. So here we are, 2010, and we have kids that just don't care. They don't have any respect. They, they, you know, you have to earn respect in this town. You have to get to where, you know, that's why some of us are here, we're like, wait a minute, they don't have enough respect for the noise that people have to deal with in their homes. Why should they have to put up with that? Why should they be tearing up things? So, anyway, so my son and this other kid, I let them ride, and they were having a great time. Now, I wish there had been some kind of educational thing, and I, we learned the hard way. They're racing, and they're racing, and I see them coming, I pull up with my truck, I see them racing, one's coming, there's a tall hedge, and my son's going this way, and I see him coming, I'm yelling. Well, you know why they couldn't hear me? Because they're so loud. Okay, so emergency service-wise, I couldn't even, I couldn't stop them from the accident they had. When they hit, they both, it was the most awesome accident you ever saw, it was really great. It was pretty bad, let me tell you, it gave me an attitude adjustment. Huh? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I was a firefighter, I get overstressed. So, I see them, they hit each other, and they actually went airborne. Now, they went way up in the sky, the bikes went that way, full throttle, and I didn't worry about the bikes, but then when they landed on the ground, my son had a couple broken ribs, the other kid had a dislocated shoulder and a broken arm.
Oh, my gosh.
So, now, my point being, had I wanted to, maybe I could have taken Lompoc to court and sued the city for letting me get away with it. Now, it was wrong what I was doing, period. And I would never sue the city, because I have integrity. But there are parents out there who will not, number one. Their kids don't care whether the neighbors get to hear the loud noises, and they're cutting through the, the park and everything else, so why would the parents care about whether they sue the city or not? So that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keim.
I have an award here. This is from, this is a national award that our city received. It says, you can't see it back there, it says, "Best City" to the 50,000 to 100,000 population category. I used my own money to go back to get this award.
Excuse me, Mr. Weaver.
Can you hear me okay?
You're supposed to address the council, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I just forgot.
It's protocol, thank you.
Uh-huh. And, and so, we got this award for, for being the best city, and we had a number of different categories. And it all started, I mean, we got 350 volunteers into the Lompoc Valley and Bloom Program. It all started right there, where we're talking about. I used to walk there, and every time I walked, I said, this gorgeous area, and it was such immense, I couldn't believe that we allowed this. So close to our residential areas, we had more than a dozen wrecked cars, and stolen cars set on fire, but all kinds of rubbish that you can think of. So it was, for me, it was like walking through a dump. And here's what it looked like. And that, now, is where the bicycle trail was. Nobody did anything about it until Lompoc Valley and Bloom came by and started the program. In our first cleanup, we took out six tons of trash. And that was just a start. Then the bicycle trail came in, and I felt really good, because now, we're going to have people going down there and enjoying it, just like I was. And, and people start to go down there. But it still had a kind of a, you know, a development aspect to it, it needed to be repaired from the work that, when they put the bicycle trail in. We had another cleanup, and this is a good thing that, and we'll hold it for you to see, I, I think you've seen this, I may have given it to you. This is, this is Dell Barrett working that machine, that, that digger, and he, he planted, along with our, rest of our volunteers, three big oak trees. Each one cost about $500, but it was put in by volunteers. And, and that was, that was really great. Then, we put native plants around, we got the Boys and Girls Club to put native plants in, and it was starting to be used, and we were all feeling very happy about it. Off-road vehicles came and rode all over the native plants, on purpose. They rode all over and just smashed them to the ground. So we went out again, and we replanted. This is all with our money that we used, we didn't use city money, we replanted these native plants. And they did it again. We replanted, and then we put signs up showing what those plants were. Some of them were just specifically plants that were, that were from this area, from our chaparral, and so they were expensive ones. And then the, then we had our judging, and it was what it looked like, you can see the trees right there. And the judges came, and thanks to John Lynn, because he helped bring over a, he towed over a golf cart, and we walked, we, we got in the golf cart, and we rode along the trail, and the judges were really happy. They saw us coming together, because one of the reasons for this award was community involvement and environmental education. And, and they loved it, they liked to see everybody working there. But before we got this award.
Mr. Weaver, I hate to.
My time is up.
I'm sorry.
The three, the three oak trees were cut down. So what I'm saying, and I'll close it up right now, what I'm saying is, the argument that we don't need law enforcement down there is really bogus. We need law enforcement. I could, I could take another five minutes to tell you all the crimes that I've seen since I've been walking there.
Mr. Weaver, thank you.
I'm sorry, my time's up. Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weaver.
I'm Charles Blair, 176 Alcor Avenue, I live in the Village. And I was, along with Mr. Weaver, our late mayor, was involved in the American Bloom cleanup. I'm very proud of it. And this is, this is the final picture he wanted to show. That's showing the tree cut down vandalism. I'm going to try to be, try to be brief, as you know, that's a little hard for me to do. Off-road vehicle, it's an, it's a legal activity that's being done in an illegal manner. The lack of enforcement is allowing the, these rowdy elements, I'm sure that, of the off-road vehicle community, probably the people that are coming.
Mr. Blair, you're supposed to address the council, it's protocol.
Okay.
Please address the council when you speak.
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Honorable mayor and honorable members, my apologies, I get, I was taking on to that, and, and the general public. Anyway, as I say, a lot of us put thousands of dollars and hundreds of volunteer hours in American Bloom to have a really nice facility. I think it is incumbent upon us to apply this grant so that we can get adequate equipment and personnel, as is said, to enforce existing laws. One of the things that Mr. Grill pointed out was the importance of this as networking in the corridor. One of the things I did, I did want to show examples of how this can be integrated into a, into an urban corridor. Could you play, show the first slide, please? Okay? I used to live in the Sacramento area, and this was, this is one of the jewels of the area. Second slide, please. Okay, the parkway is visitable, it's, it is, I've ridden on that, and it's quite used, and it's one of America's best urban corridors. Now, the San Ynez River is not the, is not the American River. The American River, it's an integrated parkway, but I think what we have here in Lompoc is a very good start. Can you show the last slide, please? This is an overall map showing how it, it ties in with existing corridors. This is a beautiful area, as I say, although it's dry much of the time, this is something that can be very well-integrated, and I think that, I firmly believe that using the, had we adequate personnel to support this would be a great benefit to the city and honor those of us, including our late mayor, who put a lot of their own effort into this. And I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blair.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Bob Hamilton, a Lompoc resident. I'm here tonight to urge that the City Council adopt Resolution 5625, now under consideration. After hearing these other speakers, it reminds me of when Tim Russert was doing the election in 2000, and it was early in the morning, and, and they asked him what was it all about, and he said, Florida, Florida, Florida. Well, this is all about law enforcement, law enforcement, law enforcement, based on what other speakers have also said. The opportunity to potentially receive a $164,000 grant to enhance education, prevent crime, and help enforce laws already in existence for the safety and well-being of our citizens seems to me to be a no-brainer. On a regular basis, my wife and I enjoy walking on the riverbed trail, Riverbend Trail, excuse me, but I must say that we've been disappointed to see it marred by graffiti, dirtied in sections by mud rocks and dirt left by vehicles, and also by Weaver's planted trees as they disappeared over a period of months, which was really sad, and the plants. Does this vandalism in consideration have a correlation to the fact that there is little enforcement to CVC 21113? I think so. CVC 21133 is clearly posted out there. No vehicles in the riverbed, no trespassing, no parking, and no dumping. Now, if you want to go there today and walk down to the riverbed, a little bit off of North Avenue, you can find an eight-foot sofa submerged in the river. And is this going to be the start of wrecked cars down there? Who knows? I don't know. I hate to see all that work go down the drain that American Bloom did. In last Saturday's letters in the Lompoc Record, there was a letter from a resident, Megan Whitzel, who with her family lives across the street from the trail, and she forbids her son, who is an ATV rider, driver, from breaking the law even as they watch others ignore it. She suggested in the letter that the city and off-roaders must compromise, and suggested that a form be generated concerning this issue. I wholeheartedly agree. In the meantime, the deadline for applying for this grant is June, and I hope you will consider law enforcement when you make your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Al Thompson, Eastside, Lompoc, and Mr. Mayor, and Ms. Mayor Portem, and members of the council. And Mr. Mayor, I do hope you get better soon. I too, of course, am for the amendment. As you know, hundreds of people use the East End Bicycle Trail, mothers with strollers, old folks, hikers, joggers, bicyclists. Recently, a woman on a wheelchair was confronted by two youths in full regalia, riding to a breast astride very expensive motorized vehicles. As things stand, it was at that moment that I realized that the City of Lompoc is subject to very heavily, very heavy lawsuits. And I, as one, a voter and a taxpayer, would not to hell like my taxes to being used for a completely unnecessary expense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
My name is Pamela Kelly, and I'm a 30-year resident of Lompoc, and I live close by the riverbed, off of Riverside Drive. And I'm hoping that you do approve this grant, and mainly, it's for the safety of the home, of our homes, the people who live by there. The ATV and dirt bike riders are speeding on the bike path and on the, our neighborhood roads to get to the riverbed, and this happens frequently. This is almost a daily event, especially on weekends and after work. And it's, it's gotten to the point where people are trucking in dirt bikes, quad runners, I've even seen them bring in a dune buggy. I've seen, I've seen a mother and her two children walking down the bike path, getting, run off the bike path by two dirt bikers. So, I mean, my, my main issue here is with the safety of our homes and our neighborhoods, because most of these people that I see riding the ATVs and the dirt bikes are ch-. Because most of these people that I see riding the ATVs and the dirt bikes are children. I've seen two and three children on one quad runner. And a large majority do not wear helmets. They're not licensed to ride in the street. And I fully support this, applying for the grant. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
My name is Tom Kelly. I live off Riverside Drive also at Riverview Terrace, and I support the grant also. Basically, the reason I support it is because, as Chief Dabney knows, and his staff knows, they probably know my voice, because I call every day just about. We have people riding up and down the street, doing wheelies. We have people doing the quad runners. It doesn't make any difference. They're off-road vehicles. They're not licensed to be on the road. And every time we call, the police respond. Ninety percent of the time, they can't do anything about it. The response from the police are, "Well, they're off the road. I can't do anything." Three weeks ago, I had six four-wheel vehicles brought in on truck, four motorcycles brought in on truck. They parked next to our house on Riverside Drive. I leaned over the fence. I was talking to the guy unloading it. And he said, and I said, you know, "The police have been out here all day. You're going to get a ticket. They're going to take your vehicle." And his answer to me was, "Once I'm off this road, they can't do a damn thing to me." And so, I'd just like to see them get the equipment they need to uphold the law. I don't care where they ride, as long as they do it legally. And it's not on the streets, it's not next to my house, and it's not on the bike path, which I have also seen people run off the bike path. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Dave Pierce. I still live in Lompoke. Back in the late 80s, Estelle Iveland organized a group of neighbors. You may know her. She was one of the partners that started the South Side Coffee Company. She asked us to get involved with what to do with the land along the east side of Lompoke. It was a freeway bypass plan by Caltrans, and they decided not to build it. And so, this was abandoned property. We approached city council and asked to acquire the land and turn it into parkland, because it was on the riverbank, and I don't think you could really develop it. It's a nice, big, grassy area. Well, Gary Keefe and the city council, with real leadership, turned it into a beautiful bicycle hiking trail along the side of the city there that's irreplaceable and one of the greatest assets we have on the east side as far as parkland. It's very nice. In the early 90s, when the water battles were going on, we, in Lompoke, as we considered the alternatives for our water supply, we developed a San Inez River Plan. And you can find that in the archives. It's a plan that was put together by people from Cal Poly and the architecture department. It describes, along with bringing attention to the value of the river, a plan for a bicycle path and circulating bicycle route around the whole city of Lompoke and even running out to surf. And the plan is in the book there. We've got the first part of it built. It's that beautiful bicycle path. But unfortunately, the access that we gain having that bicycle path also opens access to the people who would break the law. And this is probably an unforeseen new realm for the police department, because now more people are down there, the problems are growing. And it would be a very, a very big shame if this is what ends destroying the bicycle path that we went to so much trouble to get. It took all those years to get it, the money and so forth. It's time to protect it the way we would protect any normal asset for the city. So, when I looked at the staff report, I see that three California laws, three county code sections, and two municipal code sections from Lompoke are all involved here. That comes out that what we're doing is, we're really responsible for 75% of ordinances that come from outside the district, outside of Lompoke. And so, I think it's reasonable to accept grant support money to do this kind of work when we're representing those other responsibilities. So, I would support the grant and the grant proposal, and maybe this is the way we should look for managing this property in collaboration with those other agencies that have legal responsibilities. It should be part of our city, and so it's appropriate for our police enforcement people to have the resources to do it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Hi, Chris Smith, Riverside Drive. Good evening, the city council and the mayor. I'd just like a little clarification. I have a printout here from the Lompoke Police Department stating, "The Lompoke Police Department has applied for an off-highway vehicle grant through the California State Parks Department. The grant is for the purchase of equipment and enforcement in the uninhabited lands surrounding our community that to include the bike and walking trail and riverbed." And here's a off-highway motor vehicle recreation California State Parks with Lompoke Police Department on the list of cities and counties that have applied for a grant, which, if we're here to get approval for the grant, why are we having paperwork stating we've already applied for it? That's my question to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
John Lynn, City of Lompoke. First, I'd like to say David has a wonderful idea, and I think that would be great. I'm sure we can, we can put something together to make that happen. Second, I'd like to talk about an issue that was brought to me with regard to what's called an easement of prescription. And what it basically says is, if over a period, a road is used by motor vehicles, and number one, it's used openly, which is obvious, number two, it's used notoriously, and I think we can say yes to that, and number three, it's used continuously for a period of five years, then it becomes a public right-of-way for the use by licensed motor vehicles. This wouldn't apply to a quad or something like that that had a green sticker. So, we're confronted with this problem of having allowed for some 90 years, a prescriptive easement to have existed across what has now become city land. Now, if someone started using city land for that today, the law would prevent that. But a prescriptive easement comes forward in time with a piece of property. So, once the prescriptive easement exists, if it is never abandoned by the users, then the easement goes on. And that is one of the issues that we have with regard to access for the riverbed. I want to tell you that I am not opposed to the police department seeking this grant. I simply think we need to take a slightly different approach. First, I believe that the police department should restructure their grant to help the city and perhaps our nonprofit or another nonprofit construct an off-road vehicle area so that we will finally solve this problem once and forever that has gone on for many years. Because as the chief pointed out, this is a one-year grant. If we get it for one year, it does not mean we'll get it for another, and it's very competitive. I would ask that the council instruct the chief to amend the wording so that this grant can be used, among other things, to help establish this off-road vehicle area. We all recall that back in the 60s, land was given to the city for an off-road vehicle park, which existed until the mid-80s at the current Riverbend Park site. And these problems largely did not exist because that facility was available. The facility was closed because then there was no protection from the city, and the city was bare in terms of insurance. And when they found that out, they chose to close it and protect the city. Today, the California Extreme Sports Law protects the city in a structured environment. So, in our skate park, we are protected from lawsuit by this. In a BMX park, we are protected from lawsuit. We are not protected in an unadministered area. However, if we had a formal off-road vehicle area, and I believe the property at the back of the airport that we received from the flood control district would be more than suitable for this, this law would also protect us by little more than posting signs and making sure the area was safe, because the legal challenge for someone to sue the city is extremely steep. What I would ask the council to do today is to ask the grant be amended so that this activity could be included in its effort. If we fail and we're unable to bring a off-road vehicle park forward, nothing is lost. But if we succeed, then the grant funds can be used in pursuit of that. I would also recommend that the council speak to the city attorney regarding the easement of prescription to avoid litigation with regard to that. And on behalf of the Parks Foundation, this was a project that was on our agenda when we began the foundation, and we are certainly willing to carry it forward with a group of citizens who want to make it happen and offer our nonprofit status. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Evening, mayor, city council. Will Skyler, resident of the city. I'd like to read a letter from a lady who is retired, so you can kind of get an idea of maybe what she might look like if she were here, able to be here. And she came by and had some comments about the riverbed and stuff and so. I told her to put it in a letter, and then I would come and read it in her stead. So, it's April 16th. "I am very concerned with the diminishing outdoor areas for all of us, but especially young people. Closing the riverbed is just another loss. Children between the ages of eight and 18 spend an average of 45 hours a week in front of a screen. The amount of time spent unstructured outdoor play is 30 minutes per week." And this is per a website, Children's and Nature Organization Research. "Dr. Stephen Kessler of Yale University found, 'Play in nature, particularly during a critical period of middle childhood, appears to be especially important time for developing the capabilities of creative problem-solving and emotional and intellectual development.'" Further, Dr. Burley Healy and Robert C. Wagner state, "Children will be smarter, better able to get along with others, healthier, and happier when they have regular opportunities to free play, unobstructed play in the outdoors." Both of these studies, and many others, were found in the above website. So, what solutions are there to keep open space that are safe and encourage young people, and for that matter, all of us, to be healthier, happier, and better able to get along with others? Riverbed. Set aside an acre just off the, for off-highway vehicle law. As Megan Whittsle reminded us in her great letter of April 17th, there are a park for people years ago. In addition, we have an area next to the soccer field where young people could build their own BMX track, Vandenberg Air Force Base. Why not ease access to north base through Vandenberg Village on Firefighter Road north of Highway 1, where the houses have been removed? We are lucky to have a beautiful mission and state park lands for hikers and horses. Many of us choose to live in Lompoke because we are surrounded by many beautiful, open areas. Let's work to keep it open, or more often, a wonderful outdoor area that we do not keep closing access to. Again, I agree with Megan Whittsle that if we do open a safe, legal, and fun place to ride off-road vehicles, that there would probably be no additional costs for police, and that the pedestrians could get their pack, bike, or their path back. How important is it to have healthy children and adults? Signed by Susan Lyon. She is not a city resident. She lives within the valley. Had a lot of testimony, last meeting and this meeting. The five of you represent the city of Lompoke, the youngsters, the middle-aged, the older. You need to make a decision. It's obvious, I think everybody here agrees, there's a situation that we need to address. All I'm saying is, I don't think throwing more law enforcement is the total answer. You need to look at this problem, come up with a plan for the whole thing. They talked about the refuge and stuff down there. Well, when that private land was privately owned, or when it went to the state, you didn't have these problems, because the people that used it took care of it. When it becomes city property and you start putting up no trespassing signs and sent the heat down, then the trash started showing up. So, I still believe if the area is used and there are people present, that problem will solve itself. And I encourage you to look at the recreational needs of all citizens of Lompoke. And again, we have lots of tennis courts, soccer fields, and everything else.
Mr. Skyler.
We do need a place to ride. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please, if you're going to speak, come up to the podium at this time.
Mayor, city council, Joyce Howerton, Lompoke. You know, we have really two different issues here tonight, and I, it was reassuring to hear people talk about wanting to look and find an off-road site for off-road vehicle riders. And I would encourage you to do that. I think it's really important. But I don't think that's the issue we're talking about here tonight. What we're talking about is actually a very well-written grant through the Lompoke Police Department to help us enforce the laws of this community. I mean, it's pretty basic. And I would commend Chief Dabney and his staff for being creative and going outside the box and looking at where there's other monies to help supplement their, their income in a time when it's so tight and money is so tight. And so, that's what you need to look at tonight. You're all the community role models. We look to you to show us the direction to go in. And so, when we talk about supporting public safety or law enforcement, you know, you have to have the police department's back. So, I would strongly encourage you to support this grant without any additions to it, because it's, $160,000 is not a lot of money when you're looking at, at some of the issues they're looking at. And then, I would encourage the people tonight that talked about an off-road park to organize, get together, and look. There was a time we were talking to people at the prison, and there, it was, it was actually, they were open to looking at a site. I don't know what happened to those, to that, but that might be something you'd want to look at. But not you, the city council, you, the community that wants an off-road site that is not in an environmentally sensitive area. So, I encourage you to support the grant. It's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howerton. Seeing no one rise, we'll take it back to the council. Any comments, please? Council member, Rouge.
I'm going to say the same thing I said two weeks ago, which was very similar to what Ms. Howerton just said. There are two issues here. There is a need for an off-road area, and I think it behooves the people that support that to go out and do it themselves, find the spot. And we can work together to try and make, to make that happen, excuse me. But I do think at this point, I also agree, $164,000 isn't enough to buy property or put together a, an off-road site. So, I fully support this grant. The police department has worked very hard getting grants over the last few years that I know of to complement what they're trying to do, which is to support the law. And that's the law. And you can stand up here and talk about prescription easements and so on, but the law right now says that we are responsible and we have the right to determine what happens in that riverbed. So, I, that's what I said two weeks ago, and I'm going to stick to that.
Thank you. Council member Durham.
At the last council meeting, Mr. Smith brought up some issues that I wanted to look into, as well as the city attorney. Over the last two weeks, in my follow-up on the statements that Mr. Smith gave, I not only contacted the state of California, but I contacted the county of Santa Barbara. I've got probably close to 200 pages of documentation. As far as perceptive easement, you can't have perceptive easement if you're down there in violation to begin with. So, we don't have a problem with the perceptive easement. What we have a problem with is people not obeying the laws that are there. I've talked to several people that live on and around the bike trail over the last two weeks. And what's amazing to me is that over the last two weeks, four of the people that I spoke to have had problems with people on the bike trail. And it's dirt bikes, mostly. Well, in fact, all of them were dirt bikes on the bike trail. I would certainly think that if the advocates, you know, against this proposal, wanted to give any support and structure behind it, the last thing you would have done was been down in the riverbed or on that bike trail. the riverbed, or on that bike trail over the last two weeks. I'm in support of the request from the Lompoc Police Department. It's several issues. A comment was made that there's no place for, you know, the youth to go, although we have Los Padres National Forest, Ballenger Canyon Deer Park, Mount Pinos, San Lucia. It goes on and on and on. Over 300 miles of trails that are built for dirt bikes and off-road vehicles. Liability is an issue. Without a doubt, it's an issue. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you. I have two questions for Chief Dabney. I think I know the answer to this, but maybe you can clarify it. Earlier, there was a comment made that there's a paper circulating that the grant has already been applied for. Could you address that?
Well, the way that this particular grant is structured, you have to make pre-application. The final deadline for the grant is May 3rd, and you submit the grant to Sacramento for their review, and they post it on the website for the public to view. And then you bring the resolution to the council for their approval. If the council doesn't approve the resolution, then the grant doesn't go forward, but the actual formal application takes place on May 3rd. And so what's posted on the website is the pre-grant approval process, and people in Sacramento give us feedback on the preliminary proposal that we send up there.
Thank you for the clarification. The second question is, Barry's still in the audience, this is in jest, Barry. Golf carts on the bike path, would they be allowed?
No.
Barry, you would have been violating the law, so. No, you can't. Okay, thank you, chief.
I think there is an exception for motorized wheelchairs for medical purposes.
Do we have any other comments from the council?
If I may. I'd like to point out that all of us have looked at some additional photographs that were provided by Mr. Weaver, similar to the ones that he showed here, that they came into us and circulated. We also probably all received emails and letters similar to the one Mr. Grill provided in writing earlier, to me, same comments that he made tonight, so I just want to mention those.
I would like to comment that I will continue to support the approval of the grant as I did two weeks ago, and I stated my reasons then. We cannot be selective in how we apply the law and where do we exercise the law. We have to be basically across the board. So it is not our time here to look away and say, no, we're not going to enforce that law there, but we're going to go and enforce a law elsewhere. So I will approve the grant proposal.
Councilmember Rouge.
Yeah. And Madam Chair, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 5625 (10), approving a grant application submitted by the Lompoc Police Department to the California Department of Parks and Rec in the amount of $164,252 to enhance public education, crime prevention, and enforcement of laws, and also to authorize the city administrator and chief of police or his designee to accept and administer the California Department of Parks and Recreation grant if it's awarded.
We have a second. Any more comments from the council? Moving on into the next agenda item. Agenda item number eight, authorization to proceed with the Richard L. Dewey Senior Community Center and Lompoc Aquatic Center dehumidification projects. Mr. McCaffrey, thank you. Maybe we'll wait for one second until we get the room quiet again.
Okay, Mr. McCaffrey, thank you.
Honorable Mayor Protem, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, those in our audience tonight, those at home. Tonight, we're seeking authorization to proceed with the Richard L. Dewey Senior Community Center and Lompoc Aquatic Center dehumidification system projects. The goal of my report tonight is to give a chronological summary of the projects to date and to get direction of the council. Development and the presentation of this report was and is a team effort. City staff, as well as our principal architect on the Dewey Senior Community Center, Todd Jesperson, will be available to answer questions at the conclusion of this report. The recommendations for the council's consideration are to accept public comment, to direct staff to proceed with steps necessary to issue a redevelopment agency tax allocation bond, which includes sufficient funds for the Richard L. Dewey Senior Community Center and Lompoc Aquatic Center dehumidification projects, to allocate 1.5 million from the Community Development Block grant for construction of the Richard L. Dewey Senior Community Center, and direct staff to solicit bids for the construction of the Richard L. Dewey Senior Community Center and a dehumidification system at the Lompoc Aquatic Center. Some background. On May of 2006, actually, let me just state that, in May of 2006, city council approved the sale of the city property which housed the Lompoc Valley Community Center at 1501 East Ocean Avenue to the Lompoc Healthcare District. The sale agreement provided for the relocation of the community center to a 15,000-square-foot portion of the west wing of the old hospital building. The agreement allowed the city to take a cash payment of $2 million in lieu of taking ownership of the 15,000-square-foot portion of the hospital. In August of 2008, the vacant 15,000-square-foot commercial building at 1120 West Ocean Avenue and the adjacent 6,750-square-foot lot combined together were considered a viable option for the new Lompoc Valley Senior Community Center. The two properties together comprise 1.9 acres and also contain 118 parking spaces. It was determined that developing this site in lieu of the rehabilitation in the old hospital building would more than adequately meet the community needs for the present as well as the future. At that time, city council directed staff to acquire the properties. The cost of the building was $1.5 million and $370,000 for the vacant lot, for a combined purchase price of $1.8 million. On September 2nd of '08, the city council awarded a design contract to Kruger Benson-Zimmer Architects for $274,500 to complete the design work, the construction documents, bid packaging, construction phase monitoring, and other associated elements of the contract to develop the new senior community center. At the time, council also directed staff to expedite the project in order to minimize the impacts on the facility users and occupants. The initial forecasted construction cost was estimated to be $2.9 million. On February 17th of 2009, in an agreement for extra services between the city of Lompoc and KBZ Architects, also known as Kruger Benson-Zimmer Architects, was approved for additional design work for alternative floor plans requested by the public for the senior community center. In July of 2009, I'm sorry, the revised budget for the design work is now at $302,000 with KBZ. In July of 2009, KBZ Architects identified additional work that they uncovered during the design phase on this building. The work could not be identified during the preliminary inspections of the building, and the total cost of the additional work to make the improvements of the building was $1.2 million. The estimated construction cost is 4.3. As with all construction projects, the true cost will not be known until the bid process is complete, and once again, the bid process has not been started. We will be seeking that approval. So a reminder once again that the numbers that are before you are only estimates. Due to increased estimated construction cost, the architect was directed to review cost-saving options. After review of the proposed cost-saving options provided by the architect, staff found that elimination or phasing elements would significantly impact the operations and the aesthetics of the facility, and staff felt very strongly that this would diminish the opportunities for revenue generation and the overall appearance and function of the facility. The table on page four shows the components that were considered for elimination, the potential cost savings associated with, and the basis for retention. The estimated project cost for the senior community center is $7,675,634. In the staff report before you, the summary table on page five shows the original bonding capacity estimates from 2006. It shows the current estimated costs, the costs incurred through April 2nd of 2010, and the expected remaining costs to complete the project. As well, attachment, or Exhibit A, rather, in the staff report provides a more detailed information. Total costs are 20% or approximately $1.3 million greater than the preliminary estimate used in developing the bonding capacity in 2006. The costs identified in the additional work, which was on Table 3, were also 20% or $1.2 million of the original preliminary estimate of 2006. Our current timeline shows the architect now working on addressing the plan check comments provided by the building department and constructibility comments provided by the construction manager. Once all comments have been addressed and the plan is deemed complete by the city, the project will be advertised for bid. Staff anticipates advertising the project for 45 days to maximize a competitive bidding environment, and the lowest bid will be brought to the city council for approval, and I want to state the lowest responsible bid. I also want to share with you as well that staff, on average, are receiving four to six calls from potential bidders on a weekly basis, so we hope that the environment is that good. After the city council approves, the contractor has 30 days to provide necessary bonds, insurance, as well as to execute the contract within that timeframe. After the city verifies that all pre-construction requirements have been met, the city will issue a notice to proceed. This officially starts the construction period, and in good faith, the architect estimates that the project will take 10 months to complete, once construction, actually, shovel hits the ground or the hammer hits the wall. In the section of the report entitled "Alternative Action," staff is recommending that council authorize staff to proceed with financing and construction of the community center. Staff is very enthusiastic about this project. A viable funding plan has been identified, which does not require the use of general fund monies. The property is under city ownership and is available for development. Construction drawings are nearing completion, competitive bids are anticipated, and once again, we're receiving calls, so we're pretty excited about that, and we hope we can carry that forward with a great number of bidders on this project. As well, the city will have a very much-needed senior community center when the day closes. However, the alternate exists for council not to go forward with the construction at this time, and should council elect to delay construction, direction will be needed regarding interim maintenance and use of the property at 1110 and 1120 West Ocean Avenue, as well whether staff is to proceed with the issuance of the RDA tax allocation bond to protect redevelopment funds from seizure by the state and to preserve these funds for future redevelopment use, as well reconsideration of CDPG budget for fiscal year 2010, 2011 to expand funds necessary to assure future CDPG income. Moving on to the Lompoc Aquatic Center dehumidification system, share some details. The existing aquatic center, as you know, does not have a humidity control system and is in desperate need of such a system. As a result, the pool enclosure and the equipment is experiencing extensive corrosion and premature deterioration. To date, the only way to reduce the humidity level within the facility is to open the operable roof. This results in an enclosure being cold and uncomfortable for occupants, and of course, as occupants don't come or they go away, once again, our activity lessens and our revenues diminish. After the facility opened to the public in October of '06, it became apparent that corrosion was not going to be solved through ventilation of the operable roof. At the city's request, the design team prepared a schematic design for the dehumidification system that would mitigate corrosion and keep the temperatures in the pool enclosure at a comfortable level. After funding was identified, the city advertised a request for proposal to design the system. In February of 2008, the city received a design proposal and selected the consulting firm led by Revat, Albrecht, and Associates. In November of 2009, the city council requested that a structural evaluation be performed by a licensed engineer to determine the extent of corrosion to key building components. A site visit was made on January 13th of 2010 by Cannon and Associates, and a report was prepared documenting their findings and documentation with recommendations. The project design is complete and will soon be submitted for plan check to the building department. Once funding is approved, staff will work with the purchasing department to order mechanical units in advance of the construction due to the amount of time required for the special equipment. Let me just state that again, didn't make sense to myself either. Due in time to the purchase time to get this equipment in place, so that we can be ready to go with construction. The current construction timeline is scheduled to begin the end of summer 2010. Initial construction is scheduled to take place on the exterior of the facility, with significant facility work requiring facility closures to take place during the annual closure that typically occurs the end of November into January. As we move on, the summary table found on page seven of the report reflects some of our current project costs, as well as the original bonding capacity estimates from 2006. It also reflects the current estimated costs, costs incurred through February 28, 2010, and the expected remaining costs to complete the project. A more detailed table is available in your attachment Exhibit B at the end of the report. The estimated project cost for the Aquatic Center dehumidification system is $1,872,468. I really wish it were the first number I quoted, but it's not. The fiscal impacts on this report. The planning for the senior community center started in 2005-06 fiscal year. At that time, staff was directed to investigate the use of tax increment financing available through the Lompoc Redevelopment Agency. In addition, CDPG resources became available for the acquisition of the potential site for the senior community center. A presentation was made in November of 2008 by the city's financial advisor, KNN Public Finance, and that indicated the Lompoc Redevelopment Agency has the capacity to borrow approximately $7 million to fund activities identified in the current Lompoc Redevelopment Agency implementation plan. At that time, three projects were identified for further investigation and possible use of tax increment financing. The projects were the senior community center, the aquatic center dehumidification system, and the downtown pocket park. and the downtown pocket park. The table found on page eight of your report identifies estimated funding sources available to finance the respective senior community center and the Aquatic Center dehumidification systems projects. The first item listed as a source is the CDBG entitlements, as well as the third item are sources for the project. However, they have been used for the acquisition of the property and are no longer or not currently available for remaining costs on the project. In addition, you will note that the table identifies approximately $6.2 million of bond proceeds while the bonding capacity of the agency is expected to be $7 million. The differential represents available funds for other projects beyond the two currently identified for funding. CDBG funds of $1,034,942 were deposited from the proceeds received from the Lompoc Healthcare District. This amount represents the reimbursement cost for the improvements of the former community center funded through CDBG resources. The Lompoc Redevelopment Agency was also reimbursed for costs of improvements that it funded in the amount of approximately $120,000. The remaining proceeds reflected reimbursements of CDBG and non-RDA costs of development of the property and was deposited in the city's general fund. Although not specifically designated, the program income received by CDBG from the sale of the community center property has always been considered a funding source for the replacement of the senior community center. The $1,034,942 reimbursement of costs is a portion of the request to allocate 1.5 million in CDBG funds to the senior community center project. To date, no general fund sources have been utilized for the development of either of the two projects discussed in the staff report or for the investigation of the use of bond proceeds from the Lompoc Redevelopment Agency. The city's CDBG program has been accumulating funds over several years due to several factors. And those factors include program income or payments on loans that have been growing faster than the department can make new loans, net proceeds received from the sale of former community center, and the lack of progress by outside entities on several projects where funds have been designated. Using the 1.5 million recommended by staff on the senior community center project will produce a tangible community benefit for CDBG target beneficiaries fulfilling HUD's CDBG objectives. Since almost 70% of the amount recommended from CDBG is from the former community center, dedications for other projects can be reinstated from future grants at such time that those projects are approved for construction. In summary, staff recommends that city council give direction to proceed with steps necessary to issue a redevelopment agency, excuse me, tax allocation bond, which includes sufficient funds for the Richard L. Dewey Senior Community Center and the Lompoc Aquatic Center dehumidification projects, to allocate 1.5 million from community development block grant for construction of the Richard L. Dewey Senior Community Center, and to direct staff to solicit bids for the construction of the Richard L. Dewey Senior Community Center and the dehumidification system at the Lompoc Aquatic Center. This concludes my report. However, I do want to make note that Todd Jespersen, our principal architect on the Dewey Senior Community Center, does have comments to share regarding the design process phase. And at the conclusion of Mr. Jespersen's comments, we have a whole team of staff, my counterparts, Brad Wilkie, Arlene Pelster, Larry Bean, Kevin McCune, and we will be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey.
And on that note, I'd like to introduce Mr. Todd Jespersen.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, just have a few brief comments. I was asked to speak. Obviously, there are some concerns about cost and where we kind of shifted from an early number to, you know, a much higher number where we're at now. It was an interesting project. We were first approached in 2008, and that there was definitely a sense of urgency and that the LVCC had an imminent deadline of when that facility was going to be torn down. And we were approached with this alternate facility on Ocean Avenue. We were initially given an approximate budget number. They were looking, asking us if it could be done for about $150 a square foot for the 15,000 square foot facility, which is about two and a quarter million dollars. We took a look at it. We looked at their existing facility at LVCC, other community-type projects that we've done, and basically worked up a preliminary budget of, you know, what that would look like. Broken out into the kind of 16 common construction divisions. And at that point, it looked like it certainly was a feasible project and that the city could move forward with it. As we got into the process, certainly we're all aware of the ad hoc committee and the great job. We met extensively with them, with neighbors. It was a long process and involved a lot of input, which I think, you know, has resulted in a great community center project of where we're at now. Certainly along with that came a more definitive description of, you know, what was to happen inside of this facility, this new facility being, you know, approximately 40% larger than what their facility was at LVCC, and the type of things that they were trying to do there, particularly in respect to income generation. Obviously, as the project went through the process, 2008, 2009, the economy started to deteriorate, and they wanted to make certain that this facility was going to be self-sufficient. So the program, a lot of those elements being driven by, you know, what can we do to make this facility more rentable, more appealable to outside entities? Also, as we got along into the process of, you know, the normal design investigations, some things came to our attention, both moisture problems from underneath through the slab, and then an evaluation of the roof proved that it was going to need to be completely replaced. So I think, you know, what happened, or in the comparison of what happened from that preliminary number, which was kind of a concept of the community center project and was feasible, to where we are now with a very well-developed program for what happens inside that facility, that, you know, again, had input from lots of different entities and, you know, striving to meet those goals of income generation, we ended up adding cost to the project to meet those goals. You know, in the history of other projects we've done, you know, community centers, other public project type of, sorry, other public works type of projects, while, you know, certainly the magnitude of this increase isn't common, increases are, you know, part and parcel with these type of projects, especially, you know, as you start with sort of a undefined program and move to a more well-defined program, you're going to see budget numbers increase. Other than that, that was all I had to say in terms of our movement of cost from one place to the other. And I think the team is available for questions from council.
Do we have any questions from the council?
I'd prefer to get public comment before I comment.
Okay, so, does the council agree on that? Okay, let's move on into public comment. Please come up to the podium. If there's going to be a lot of speakers, I would request that we lined up to speed up the process here. There are five minutes again. Please watch the lights. State your name and your place of residence.
Mayor Samensky, I'm Mayor Protem. Members of the council, I'm Rob Strong of Strong Planning Services. I'm an economic development consultant. I'm representing the Skarim Family Trust, which is a owner of a part of the shopping center adjacent to the proposed Richard L. Dewey Senior Community Center. This project, as has been explained, has a developed history for the city to acquire this site, to do some design work, and to move towards improvement of a center. We'd actually like to see the private sector partner and upgrade the center itself, the remainder of the center. And I think you're setting a good example. Timing, obviously, is an issue. Costs are always an issue, but this is an excellent time to be going out to bid. It's an appropriate expenditure of redevelopment agency tax allocation financing. It's an appropriate expenditure of CDBG funds. It's a neighborhood that needs, and a community that needs this facility. So I'm here to support the requested direction from the council to hopefully see this project move forward into construction this year and be available next year. And hopefully, we can accompany it with a enhancement of the remainder of the center, the parking lot, landscaping, signage, facade enhancement, a variety of improvements that the public sector can anticipate. But I think it's appropriate that the city complete what it has started, and hopefully you agree. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Strong.
Mary Lou Parks, Lompoc. I was trying to think of what to say today. And I went to my report that we're going to be giving the city council next month because the ending of it, I think, is very appropriate. We've all been through all kinds of losses in the last couple of years, last two years. And I feel the seniors in Lompoc have suffered a lot of loss in spite of the fact that the Park and Rec has, department has tried their best to accommodate the seniors at the Anderson Center. I'm down there frequently, and it's not the same. We had what we needed, so we know what it's like, and we don't have that anymore. And I would like very much to see us proceed with this community center, with the Richard L. Dewey Senior Community Center. But what I said at the end of my report is that this has been an incredibly difficult time for everyone, and especially low-income seniors who live only on social security. There will be no cost-of-living adjustments or COLAs for the next several years, which will make life even harder. At the same time, a number of support services have been reduced or eliminated. It will become increasingly more difficult for some of our older population to remain in their own homes. When the elderly lose so much of their support system, we can usually expect to see an increase in admissions to skilled nursing homes. This not only causes older people to be placed prematurely, but it also costs the taxpayers a lot more money. When we have hard times, we see more costs shifting, and the bottom line can be that it costs all of us more. It would be extremely beneficial for us to get our new senior community center up and running so that we will be again able to provide a central access point so our community elderly can get all the information and assistance possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parks.
Mayor, council, my name is Noelle Lawson. I supervise adult protective services and in-home supportive services. Tonight, I'm here representing the senior commission. I know we are in tough budget times, but because of this, many of the nonprofits serving our seniors have gone out of business or have scaled back services. The senior community center is a vital safety net for Lompoc seniors. I urge you to stay the course and proceed with construction. I know Dick Dewey would be proud to see this project completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson.
My name is Ella Gale. I'm a senior. And thank you to the council for allowing me to come and speak to you. I really don't have much to say. We are still reminisce about the previous center. It was very dear to our hearts. But actually, it was getting cramped. We were exercising in a room that, then we split and made two sections, and it was still getting tight. Every time we go to Tuesdays and Thursdays, there's some new people. The count right now on a typical day is like 65 in the exercise, and it was in the 30s by number, you know, in the previous. So the need is increasing by leaps and bounds. We don't leap and bound, but our needs do. And in Terry Robinson, we have a wonderful teacher, but she tries to keep her eye on each person, and with the increase in size, it gets more and more difficult. We need to be able to have more sessions. We need a new center. And it's in your hands. Thank you.
Mayor and city council, I'm Paul Rosso, Santa Clara Drive in Lompoc. I was kind of the add-on member of the ad hoc committee, and I have no concern whatsoever with the design of the building and its need. I do, in fact, I came here tonight to oppose the center, but after hearing Mr. McCaffrey's presentation of the financial issues and the need, the only thing I oppose is the financing. I am very concerned about the purchase price of the building, a building that was vacant for 20 years and was bought for, including the land, for approximately $2 million, slightly less. Now, I found out one new thing tonight, it had a bad roof. Seems to me that, first of all, I had an opinion that a year or so ago, the building and land was only worth about $500,000, and I think it was way overpaid for. But hearing tonight that the roof was bad and there's a slab problem, I think someone needs to look at going back to the people from which the building was purchased to get reimbursement for the cost of the roof. That should have never been allowed to pass, the roof. And the other concern I have, I don't have any concern about using the 1.5 million from the CDBG. I do have a concern about redevelopment tax agency, agency tax allocation. I've been at a couple of meetings where their accounting from that agency was questioned by the city council, and they couldn't come up with answers about various things they have done. And I'm assuming this is the same overall group of people. And I think that has to be very carefully looked at. And I'm really concerned with the high price tag if some of these actions aren't considered like reimbursement for the roof. And I don't really want to see Lompoc get stuck with a $7 million bill. And I'm only concerned with the senior center. The other thing for the aquatic center is obviously needed from an engineering point of view. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosso.
Shirley Garcia, Lompoc. I would just like to say that the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to get, as it has gotten more expensive from the beginning. It's too bad that they, we couldn't have stayed out on Ocean, on East Ocean Avenue where we were, but we can't. So let's get on with it, get it done so that they will have, we will have a senior center and not incur any further cost. And also, this swimming pool needs to be done, should have been done before, but hey, lots of should-bes. Let's get it done now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
John Lynn, City of Lompoc. You know, this, this resolution that we have before us tonight is actually three resolutions. And I have a concern about that because I think we're probably not reviewing the RDA resolution quite in the depth that we would need to. If you will all recall, the last meeting we had with reviewing the RDA application, and I raised questions about documents that weren't there, the bond rating, the bond council's report, and a number of others. At that time, the total number of pages with relation, related to this bond was about 39 pages. The documentation for the pool bond ran 700 pages. So it seemed obvious at the time, and I think the council noticed that, that we didn't have all the facts and figures before us, and we don't, we don't have them here before us now. us now. Just looking back to 12 of '09, when we had the Old Town RDA Implementation Plan, those numbers don't match this staff report, and we're only a few months up the road. I'm wondering, with regard to the roof and the asbestos, if we had a Level 1 inspection of the facility before we bought the property, because that should have been the responsibility of the seller. When the hot, when the city sold the community center to the hospital, they had to bear the cost of removing the roof and the asbestos before the hospital took possession. Thing that I'm most concerned about is the cost overrun. Our original construction estimate was $2.9 million. We now find ourselves at 4.3, a 45% increase in the construction cost segment. This is a dramatic difference, and there were surely, there were obviously some problems with the original estimate and the original inspection. So I'm very concerned that that's just the tip of the iceberg, and we really don't know what this is going to cost over the long haul. And I, you know, there've been a lot of comments about the cost overruns on the pool, and I surely would hate to see that happen again on this project. What are the costs that we don't know about yet? What costs of the construction management added? What costs have the, will a plan check add? As recently as December, there was discussion that we were going to be about $500,000 over budget, and now we find ourselves 1.4. Perhaps this project should take its lead from the Water Department. You'll recall that when the Water Department wanted to pig some lines, and it came in at about twice the price that they had anticipated, they scaled their project back to live within the money that they had. With regard to the dehumidifier, you know, I think we're going to have to do it. But maybe now would be a good opportunity to stop and consider seriously alternatives to this project. Three of you on the council, we're not on the council when this project was begun. Two of you that were on the council, the economic times are completely different. Today, alternatives exist that did not exist back then. Specifically, recently, the Masonic Lodge Building has come on the market. It's fully refurbished. There's a description of the project in the building. It has adequate size. It's $850,000. We could move in in 60 days. There may be others out there. There are other alternatives. Before we spend our future, let's look at the alternatives.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Pat Brady, Member of the Parks and Rec Commission and a member of the now-defunct task force for this particular building. I agree with a couple of people who came up and said, "Let's get this done." We don't have any place for our seniors to go now, other than the Anderson Center, but that's pretty full with being a community center, recreation center. This has gone on for a long time, as we all know, and costs keep going up. And each time someone comes up and suggests another building, another way to do it, another place, we lose time. And I think we either have to say, "We're going to do it now," or we don't do it. I mean, I, to me, having been on both committees, about the time you think you're there, somebody comes in and has a completely different idea, and pushes and pushes and pushes, and now we're back to square one. So just from a purely personal point of view, I say, "Let's get this done." If not, then I, I say, "We forget it completely." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brady.
Cadman, Lompoke. Some naval officer said once, "Damn the torpedoes, full speed ahead." And I think maybe that's the tack this city council needs to be on right now. We've had delays and delays, and the delays have had delays. How much longer do you think the gray hairs of this community will tolerate it? You need to think about that. It even had me thinking, "Oh, boy, don't give up your day job." We have been down this road since May of 2006. I hope, or I had hoped, that we would be opening this center in February 2011. It ain't going to happen. But how much down the road do we have to go before we can say the Dick Dewis Center is now open for business? Dick Dewis sat there and said what I am going to say to you again. It is time to stop dickering and to start building.
Thank you, Mr. Cadman.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council, Ralph Harmon. Just a comment about the dehumidifiers at the pool. I've become a regular user of the pool, and as such, I made some observations. And one is, when the roof is open, it funnels the air down into that pool. I don't quite understand why, but it sure does. It picks up speed, I think, as it comes through that, that opening. So opening the pool as a means of dehumidifying it serves one purpose, but as far as the patrons are concerned, it's not a, not an option. And it's not just the patrons, but it's also the staff. I, I watch the, the young people there that are teaching the swimming lessons, and they're half in and half out of that water, and they're cold. And they're sitting over there shivering when the, when the roof's open in the afternoon, and that's when the wind comes up most of the time. So I don't think we have much of a choice on that dehumidifying thing, but we've got an investment to protect, and we need to move forward on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon.
Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor, Councilpeople, my name is Bob Holloway. And, you know, everybody's complaining about how long it's taken. Well, right now, we have a, we have a great opportunity to move in in 60 days, the same exact size as the one that was on West, East Ocean. You know, it's all retrofitted, it's all seismic, everything. So, you know, you, you know how much it's going to cost. It's going to cost $1 million, and that's all you're going to have to put out. You're not going to have to worry about if it's going to cost this much, and then there's find something else, and it's going to cost them more and more and more. You know, right now, we can put them seniors in there, in 90 days, they can be in there, and everything up, up and running. And, you know, everybody keeps complaining about, "Well, it keeps going on, and people keep bringing up new things and stuff like that." Well, some of the things that we bring up weren't there when we were doing it. I was on the ad hoc committee. I know how they treated me, you know, because I brought up another project. So, you know, you guys have to be fiscally responsible and do the right thing, because, you know, the city doesn't have any money. And if you guys keep spending the money like it's water, well, we're never going to have any money. And right now, we know we can get that money, and we got, we got $1 million. We can put $1 million in there, and we know that that's the end of it. All we have to do is take care of the maintenance and everything, and the seniors can be in there in 90 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway.
Mayor of City Council, Joyce Howerton, Lompoke. Wow. You know, I remember in 1992, making a commitment to the seniors of this community that we would develop a community center that would be for their use, and we did. And we no longer have one. And you know what's really sad to me, sitting here and listening to all this? That the hundreds of hours of meetings we've had, I'm now a senior, and I wasn't when this started. And a lot of the people that were there in 1992 are no longer with us. I mean, we could talk this to death, and we've gotten pretty close to doing that. But the reality is, you've got to do something. You have a responsibility to the seniors of this community to provide them a space. But more than that, a responsibility to the community. I love the Masonic Temple. I think it is a great facility. The kitchen's awesome. But when we talked about this community center, it was a senior center, but also a center where you could have weddings, or dances, or events. And I'm telling you, if you haven't been up to the Masonic Temple, go up and look. It's in a beautiful location, surrounded by a very quiet neighborhood. And the first time a band goes off in that neighborhood, you think the council was filled tonight. You will have people coming out of the windows, because they're not going to stand for it. You have to be realistic. If, in fact, you want to develop just a senior center, and you don't want to have a lot of extra programming for these seniors, the Masonic Temple would be perfect. But if you're going to stick with a community center, then you need to go with something that's going to provide the needed space to do all the different activities. And I would just encourage you, do something. We need leadership on this issue, and you're our leader. So make a decision and go with it before those of us in this room are no longer here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howerton. We don't allow second people talking.
Mary Lou Parks, again. I just, I want to answer really quick.
I, I'm afraid that the regulations dictate that we don't have the same speaker, speaker to speak twice. Could that be clarified by the city clerk, please?
That is what the council's rule is on its meetings, is to not have the same speaker speak twice.
Is it our option to waive that this evening?
It's always your option to take that kind of an approach. I would just caution you that if you do, you may cause others who also want to speak twice on any other matter.
Can Mr. McCafferty answer the questions?
At this point in time, I, the council is, what are the wishes of the council at this time? I guess not.
I'm sorry I don't have a card, because I wasn't intending to speak earlier. My name is Tom Parks. I live in Lompoke. And I apologize for the little outburst that I had when the Masonic Building was mentioned. I apologize to the people who brought it up, and I apologize to the council and the people here in the room. I do not apologize for my opinion of it. The building is totally inadequate from a size standpoint, from a configuration standpoint, and the glib announcement that that's going to be perfect, we can do that in 90 days. No way. The people of this town were promised in 2006 that we would have a seamless transformation from the old community center, which was torn down, to the new community center, which would be ready. I'm ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Do we have any other speakers?
Good evening, Council. My name is Johann Skrein. I'm actually a part-owner and been here many evenings discussing the development down there with the Olson Group, I think was one of the first that wanted to build houses and the lots over there. And I've tried to work with bonds over the years, and that's been a very difficult thing. And I think that this is going to bring a lot of value to that end of town, and I think you'll see some development on the lots, and I think it'll be a huge improvement. And I would urge you to go forward with this, and that's pretty much all I have to say. And I'm looking forward to working with you all, and we support you 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skrein. Seeing no one rise, we'll take the subject back to the council. Councilmember Lingel.
Let's see, where do I start? I'll start with the aquatic center, even though I am, I think Mr. Durham said it at one time. He says, "This is really a no-brainer." That is your term. We have fif, almost $15 million invested in a $7 million project. Not to protect that with the dehumidifiers would really be a no-brainer. So unfortunately, we have to do it. We didn't do it years ago, but we must do it now to protect our investment. So where do I go with the senior center, senior community center? I don't know if anyone noticed, but I was checking my blood pressure, checking my pulse earlier. Mr. McCafferty said he is enthusiastic about this project. I have to tell you, I am disgusted with this project, for all the reasons that were mentioned earlier. Four years, it has, it had been promised. The last speaker said it was supposed to be a seamless project. It has been everything but a seamless project. Four years later, and we have just barely touched the surface on this project. It's been mentioned that this project started with an estimate of $150 a square foot. Now it's up to $255 a square foot. I don't know where we get this math, but if you take $7.6 million divided by 15,000 square feet, there's 15,000 square feet, it's $500 a square foot. This, I believe, will be probably the second most expensive building in the city of Lompoke. The only one that's going to be more expensive is the new hospital that's being built, and for many reasons, that would be justified with the seismic retrofit or seismic conditions that we had to build this hospital at. I feel this project has been completely mismanaged from the start. Too much time, broken promises, and way too much money. I'm going to support the project. I'm not proud of it. I'm yet, I'm going to be disgusted that I have to support it. But we did make promises. I made promises when I ran for city council. I promised, and I criticized the city council at the time when I was running for not having a community center for our seniors. The city council made promises in the past. I've made promises, and it's about time we start keeping our promises. In addition to supporting this project, I will be immediately in the next few days talking to our city administrator to identify a couple of things. Several, several comments were made, where, was the building misrepresented in certain ways? Can we recover any funds? I don't know if it can be. I think we, that's where we started with the mismanagement. We leased the building for several months before we purchased it. What happened during that time? I believe that was so we could do some due diligence on it. I forget exactly what it was, but I know we did lease it for a period of time. I'd like to, when I talk to the city administrator, I'd like to see if we can identify individuals that have, were negligent, city employees that were negligent in this, and hold them accountable and responsible, and have her ensure the city council that this tip, this type of mismanagement will not ever happen again. Thank you.
Well, I don't know what, I'm not going to get an applause on this one. I did, I, I was part of the city council when Dick was here, and we did make a promise, and I'm going to keep that promise. And I don't feel it's been mismanaged, and I think the RDA bond is the right way to go. It's the only way we can pay for this thing. But we do owe our community, not just the seniors. We owe the whole community this center. And I also agree that I've been up to the Masonic facility, and we'd have to do a lot of retrofitting up there. It would fit the seniors, maybe, but it wouldn't fit the exercise people, and it wouldn't fit the meetings that go on all there, and I, I just don't think it's a good fit. And that we've had enough delays, and as Ms. Brady said, you know, someone is always coming up, and we go in this direction, and we go in this direction, and we don't stay on the course, and I'm tired of it. And so I am going to support this, and, you know, I'll take the fall if there's a fall. But I think it's time to get on with it and stop screwing around.
Please refrain from applaud. Thank you very much. Councilmember Durham.
I noticed you asked them to refrain from applauding after Councilmember Rouge.
Oh, I, I didn't mean that. I'm sorry.
I'm just kidding. I'm kidding.
For the record, it is For the record, it is, I think it is in the interest of everybody to respect everybody's opinions. And if you do not agree with somebody's opinion, I would ask you to respect it by just restraining from applauding. That is why the protocol is there. Thank you.
I wasn't on the council when this first began. In fact, I was one of, one of you standing out there saying, "Well, why are we doing it this way?" Be honest with you, I don't, I don't feel that it's our staff's problem that caused the delays or caused the prices to go up. I think it's a combination of misunderstanding and the community, because we kept coming back saying, "Well, let's do this, let's look at that, let's talk about that," just like we did tonight. Now, all of a sudden, an hour before council, I get a call that, "Well, let's look at the Masonic Temple." Well, so I went by and looked at it. I agree that it's not adequate. It's not big enough. You know, I, we have to honor, you know, what was said in the past. We promised, and like Councilmember Rozier stated, we promised not only the seniors, but the citizens of this community that they would have their center. And we haven't fulfilled our obligations. It's going to cost us more. Every day you wait, it's going to cost you more. Some people might argue that fact. They may say that, well, it's, you know, the price will go down. Nothing goes down anymore, not in our economy. So I'm in favor of the community center. I'm also, obviously, like Councilman Lingal said, it's a no-brainer. You can't afford not to invest in the dehumidifier, because I, like Mr. Harmon, our entire family used to go to the pool three times a week and swim in an exercise class. I don't have enough hair on my head to keep warm. It was freezing in that place. Finally, my wife bought a wetsuit, which I refused to try to even think about getting into a spandex-looking thing. So consequently, we no longer go. My wife has tried to go back. Classes aren't available because of people like me, who refuse to go in there and freeze when I'm trying to exercise. So it is something that we should have done, but like everything else, should've, could've, would've, well, now we have to. It's just plain and simple. So I'm in favor of both actions, and also allowing staff to look for the, open up the bids for the procedure.
Mayor Samenski.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin. I support the recommendation. I'm going to vote for it. We made a promise. This has been delayed. It's been delayed because every time we look at it, we think we've got it nailed down. We're going to look at something else. We're going to lift this corner and look at it again. It, we've got to, we've got to take what we've got and move ahead. And I'd like to explain a couple of things about the project as we got it now. I don't see the possibility of an overrun on a project until a contract's awarded. When we had an estimate, the first estimate on the pool, when we shut the pool down, somebody said it will cost us $3 million to rebuild a pool exactly like we've got now. All right? Then, okay, citizens started saying, "Wait a minute, we want two pools," because the seniors want warmer water, the people that want lap swimming want colder water. Then it was put in some kiddy things, then it was put, a citizens committee designed that, and each time there was a change in the spec and increased what we were buying, the cost went up. When we awarded the contract, we went out to bid with the final specs. We had a bid price for that. The council made a positive decision, sitting here saying, "We've got a contract to build this. The bid has come in. We've got the money to buy it. We think it's reasonable." We awarded a contract, and off we went. There hasn't been overrun. I would not call the dehumidifier overrun. We made a conscious decision because people came to us and said, "Delete the dehumidifier. All you have to do is open the roof, and the moisture will escape. Delete it, and you'll save $1 million." Push, push, push. We said, "Okay, we'll take that out. We won't award the contract with that in there. If it doesn't work, we can add the dehumidifier later with a small added cost." And that's what we're doing right now. All right? With this facility, excuse me, with this facility, the original estimate was only the minimum construction cost after the building was purchased at $150 a square foot. That was the minimum construction cost to turn it into an average meeting-type facility. Sure, if you add the purchase cost on top of it, you could divide it and come up with $500 a square foot. But that was not what that $150 was. That, if you want to add into it the taxes that have been paid over the last 20 years or something like that, you could run it up to $1,000 a square foot. You're comparing apples and oranges when you, when you do that. The features that we've added, we looked at the financial conditions, and we looked at the fact that we hope that we can get enough rentals to pay the utilities, the maintenance, and so forth. In order to make it more attractive for rentals, we've, we've added some additional work. Increased HVAC, furring on the walls, a little bit of architectural rendering there to make the building a little bit more beautiful. We've, we have the money to buy. We don't have a lot of O&M costs in the future, and if we want it to rent, then I think we ought to put those things into it now so that we can rent it. One of the big objections to going ahead with the hospital was that we were not going to be able to rent it and have rented out for retirement parties, for wedding receptions, for other things, right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So we looked at someplace else. Now, all of a sudden, way back after that decision was made three years ago to get out of the, the hospital and get out of the residential neighborhood, here comes somebody that says, "Let's buy the Masonic Lodge right in the middle of a residential neighborhood." We can't keep going round and round. I favor, I favor building the, the thing that's defined for us. This is an interim step. There's still one more approval. We now have final design drawings. We know exactly what we want the thing to look like. We are, we will not, I will not vote to put out an invitation for bid unless I know I've got money to pay for it. That's not fair to the bidders that spend an awful lot of time putting together their, their bid package, and it costs them quite a bit to prepare the bids in detail to come in with this. Tonight, we're being asked to assure that the money will be available and go ahead with the RFP. That's it, or the invitation for bid. It'll come back to us when we have the bid contracts in front of us, and if at that time we don't have the money, or if the contracts are much higher, that's when the final decision will have to be made. If it is within, and it looks within the money we have, and it looks reasonable, we'll go ahead. Somebody mentioned, "Take a good look at what the water department did." The, what the water department did, they wanted to replace 200 feet of line. They went out for bid. The bid came in considerably above the estimate, so we said, "Okay, we'll only replace 100 feet of line instead, and we'll hope that the other 100 feet doesn't collapse between now and the time we can find additional money." That was not a cost savings, for crying out loud. That was just spending the money that we had. I, I'll move the recommendation, proceed with both these.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second it.
I would like to have, I would like to have a time to speak, since I haven't spoken. So I would ask, I would request that the motion is, is put on the floor after I do my comment.
Make a motion.
Okay, well, if you, if you're ready to make the motion, go ahead.
That's why I second it, then there could be further discussion, too.
Okay, so I will spend my time making the comments regarding this agenda item. I will support both actions. I went to the Aquatic Center today. I did a tour, and it is just quite obviously that the Aquatic Center needs a dehumidifier, and it is watered under the bridge as to why we are where we are. So moving forward on that, I have no issues. I will also approve and support the present plan that we have for the community center. I do want to make a comment, and, and the comment is the following. This community center, I will agree with Councilmember Lingal, I think it has been overall mismanaged. And it has been mismanaged in many ways, and unfortunately, the victims here are the seniors. Okay? The elected officials, the, the candidates use the community center for political purposes. The staff has, I don't think they really managed very well the project from the beginning. You know, the ad hoc committees had issues with closed meetings and so forth, and, and I really don't want to extend, you know, as to how far we went in all of this. But I do want to send a message to the staff, and the message is that this causes a lot of problems in the community. It creates victims that really, they, they need a center, but it gets postponed for endless different reasons. It also builds a mistrust in the community that City Hall cannot manage projects and cannot manage our tax dollars. And I have an issue with that. I mean, I really do have an issue with that. I think we need to work toward making sure that we are very efficient and that we do the best we can in administering our tax dollars. So I want to take that message to the staff. Yes, it was a beginning bid with some numbers, but if I look at some of this stuff, you know, we should have been able to realize that we needed electrical and fire alarms and security systems very early in the game, but here we have an additional $369,000 coming in at the end hour. I don't understand that, and I don't want to get into the details. My message is the following. We need to, as a council, direct our staff to be efficient in how they take a project from the beginning and the end, and work on the process, because the process is as important as the outcome. This, this community center has caused a lot of pain in this community. It has divided this community, and we need to stop that. I think it's time to stop that. So that is my message. I will support it, and I'm ready to open it back to the floor for more comments before we go on and vote.
I'll call for the question.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Do we have a request for taking a break right now? We have one.
Yes.
One request. Moving on to new business, agenda item number nine, approval of resolution 5628 declaring intent to conduct a public hearing to declare a public nuisance, 1128 North A Street.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This property has had multiple code violations since 2007. It is an unoccupied, single-family residence, which is not being maintained. There are several areas of our municipal code which are being violated, and repeated attempts have been made on behalf of city staff to contact the parties who are responsible for the property in an effort to achieve voluntary abatement of these code violations. We have been consistently unsuccessful. Therefore, the staff is recommending that we proceed with the detailed procedures which are provided in our municipal code for declaring and abating a nuisance. To this end, the staff recommends that the city initiate this process with the adoption of resolution number 5628, parentheses 10, which is before you tonight, which will declare the intent to conduct a public hearing, and then authorizing a notice of public hearing to be held on May 18, 2010, to proceed with the code enforcement process. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Pelster. Councilmember Durham. No, we can, we can take some comments right now, probably some questions. Councilmember Durham.
Oh, I had a question for Ms. Pelster.
Okay, I have Councilmember Durham first, and then moving on.
That's okay. Go ahead, Councilman, because my question's for her also. Go ahead.
Okay, Councilmember Rozier.
Okay. How long does this process take? You've got, what, nine items?
Um, yes, we.
Procedure.
I have a schedule here, and we, as you can imagine, are being assisted in great detail by our city attorney, so I'm asking him to jump in at any point on this. But generally, it looks that if we proceed with declaring a public nuisance, the court processed to obtain a warrant to allow legal access to the property, coming back with a memorandum of cost, returning the warrant to court, and then recording a lien against the property, it looks like we would be at that point of cleaning it up in early July.
July, okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, well, great. We're going to open this item for, to public comment. Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing no one rise, we take the issue back to the council. Councilmember Lingal.
I just want to compliment staff on putting together this. I think, hopefully, this is the first step in many processes similar to this in our code enforcement process. I think this is, this property in particular is way overdue for something like this happening, so good job on the prep, on the preparation of this.
I would also like to say that, yes, this is a great start to try to clean up our town. Thank you. Councilmember Rozier.
That being said, I'd like to, what's the word? Recommend that we adopt the, no.
Approval of the resolution.
Thank you. We accept sta, see, it's past my bedtime again. Accept staff recommendation. I'm a senior. Adopt resolution number 5628, parentheses 10, declaring the intent to conduct a public hearing, and then authorize notice of a public hearing to be held on May 18.
A second.
Any comments from the council? Let's vote. Moving on to the last agenda item of the evening, number 10, Transportation Development Act, TDA claim for fiscal year 2010, 2011. Mr. Fernbach.
Thank you, Madam. Recommendation before you is that the city council adopt resolution number 5626, parentheses 10, that sets forth expenditures for local transportation funds in the fiscal year 2010-11, and authorizes the filing of the claim package. City of Lompoke Transit operates six fixed routes and ADA service for the city of Lompoke, Bannenberg Village, Mesa Oaks, Mission Hills. The service is available Monday through Friday, and on Saturdays from 9 to 5 p.m. We also provide shuttle service to Hancock College. We participate with the local breeze service between Lompoke and Santa Maria to the tune of about $240,000 a year. And we also operate the Wine Country Express, which operates between here, Buellton, and A portion of the funding for COLT is derived from the sales tax on gasoline. Monies from the sales tax is collected by Santa Barbara County Association of Governments and distributed by them to the various city and county agencies that provide transit service.
Salminio.
The excess monies that are not used for transit by, by law can be then used for street maintenance. Each year, in order to receive the allocation from SB CAG, the city is required to file a TDA claim with them identifying the proposed expenditures for this money, and that is detailed in the package this evening. Resolution 562610 reflects four funding categories in the claim, approximately $25,000 for the regional transportation planning staff, about $25,000 for pedestrian and bicycle facilities, approximately $1.2 million for transit purposes, and about $343,000 for streets maintenance. Included in these funds are appropriations from the county of Santa Barbara to pay their share of service to Mission Hills, Bannenberg Village, Wine Country Express, and service to the Bridge House. In fiscal year 2010-11, staff projects In fiscal year 2010-11, staff projects COLT will be funded by a combination of funds, including Federal Transit Administration for about $1.2 million, TDA funds, about $1.2 million, and Measure A funds, about $31,000. No general fund revenue from the City of Lompoc is required for the operation of COLT. This resolution will be submitted to SB CAG for its review and approval in support of our TDA claim for 2010-11.
Thank you, Mr. Fernbach. Do we have any questions from the council? To Mr. Fernbach? No? Let's open it for public comment. Please state your name and place of residence, and you have five minutes.
I'm Dave Pierce. I still live in Lompoc. I've worked on the TDA funds issue for a number of years because the funds are intended for developing transit. And the rule is that funds that aren't used for transit can only be put to other purposes if there is no additional transit need or if the needs that are identified are unreasonable to meet. And I just don't believe that those tests have been met. And so I've of the opinion that spending 21% of this money for repairing roads is inappropriate and probably illegal, because it's clear that there are transit needs in Lompoc. I can invent them off the top of my head, and they're reasonable to meet. Let me suggest one right now. In King County, they've established a system of vans to help move people around the county to support the agricultural industry. Agricultural needs move around the county, and so the workers are stuck not having a way of doing it. They have a transit system of vans in King County that take people to the place of work they need to go to. By an intelligent computer system, they're able to pick up people at their place of residence and get them to work using one vehicle for many people. It gets cars off the road, gets people to work on time. It's great for industry. It costs little to operate because it comes from funds of this type. Lompoc could easily put in a system like that to support people visiting the new seniors' center. It's a need that we have in Lompoc, and we need to get vehicles off the road. So my recommendation is to follow the assigned uses of the funds for this grant as proposed, with the exception that $343,588 intended for street repairs should be directed to transit development as intended. So I hope that you take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Seeing no one rise, we take it back to the council. Councilmember Lingle.
Yes, Mr. Fernbach. In regards to Mr. Pierce's comments, do we, I know there's a lot of flexibility in our system. We have door-to-door service. We have a lot of routes. Do we have anything that would approach something that Mr. Pierce was talking about for the flexibility outside of, you know, picking someone up at a door and bringing someone to the place?
We pick up, we do door-to-door service or ADA service for Americans with disability. The service he may be referring to, I'm aware of, I came from the Central Valley, they are running that type of service in Santa Maria right now as a pilot project. We, however, they are running that with the county. We're restricted to run within the city limits unless we have a contract to run outside the city limits. So if the county wanted to partner with us and do that, we could do that type of thing on their dime. There is also an unmet needs hearing that takes place every year. We hold one here and did hold one last fall, and the county then also holds another one. And that was not brought up as an unmet need for our area this year. Actually, we did not have any unmet needs that were classed by SB CAG as reasonable to meet. So we did not have, according to law, any unmet needs that we could meet or had to meet. And we've done that before. There have been needs that have been brought up, and we have met them. The last one we did was a bidirectional route here in the city where we added another route going in opposite direction, and it increased our ridership.
Yeah, I think you do an excellent job managing this program. I just, I'm going to support this, but I'd request that possibly when we come up next year, I think Mr. Pierce has a real good point here, and we are an agricultural community just like Kern County. So if we could look at this at some time in the future, maybe next year, I think it's, it's an interesting project. Thank you.
Mayor Samenski.
Isn't it true that we have to, if we do put any of these things in, we have to be able to achieve a certain fare box ratio?
Yes, sir.
I know that the transit hearings that we, that we had, the unmet needs we had, there were suggestions that we should run a bus to Surf to sit there for each Amtrak train that comes through and then bring it back empty when only once or twice a week, somebody's going to want to get on the bus. You've got to be able to pick up 20, at least 20% of the cost from the fare box. And I think that the studies on most of those ideas that are thrown out show that they're just not financially feasible.
Yes, we have to recover a 20% fare box ratio, and we're not at that right now. We strive to continue to meet that. And that's one of the criteria for putting new service in place, is that there's an expectation that you meet that. The Wine Country Express, for example, came out of the unmet needs hearing, and it's, because it runs a mostly rural route, has to meet a 10% fare box. Right now, we're at about 13%, 14%. And we weren't expected to hit 10% for another year. So that's obviously a very successful route for us.
Councilmember Durham.
Mr. Fernbach, addressing Mr. Pierce's concern about the $344,000, approximately, or $344,000 for the street and road purposes, at this time, since we don't have a contract outside, that money, and if I understood you right, the money has to be spent within the city?
Our service is stipulated to be in the city. City of Lompoc Transit operates within the city limits of the City of Lompoc. In order for us to serve Vandenberg Village, Mesa Oaks, Mission Hills, the Wine Country Express, we have to be hired by the county to run the Vandenberg Village area. We have to partner with other people to service outside of the city limits. If we were to service farms or orchards or whatever outside the city limits, we would need to partner with the county, and they would be part of that process.
Well, so for, for the $344,000 allotment for the streets and the road purposes, what I'm asking is, would we have a problem in using that money for roads in the city limits?
No, it's stipulated. If it's not used for transit, it can be used for roads within.
Thank you.
I guess that was my question. So what is your logic in distributing these monies? There is a remainder, and you filled the $343,000 for street and road purposes. It's valid for the allocation of Transportation Development Act funds? I mean, I'm just trying to understand, if I were to read this fund, it says Transportation Development Act. So working on the roads is part of the Transportation Development Act, I guess?
Well, in reality, if you don't have decent streets and roads, you're going to beat up your transit system. So, you know, yes, streets and roads do help transit. Yet the reality is, we get funding from the federal government and from TDA and from Measure A to run transit, and it's specifically for transit. And if there are no unmet needs found to be able to be met, then the rest of that money that we don't use for transit goes to streets and roads.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Durham.
Mayor Protam, I'd like to make the recommendation that the council accepts Resolution Number 562610 in support of the proposal.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Rouxier seconded. Any discussions, any wishes of discussion, or do we just go and vote? Let's vote. Moving on to the last few items, do we have any written communications?
The mayor would have announced the letters that we received in support of the senior community center, and we received over 142 letters, 147?
147 letters in support to the community center, to the senior center. We also did talk about the pictures that were submitted by Mr. Weaver. Any council redevelopment agency requests, comments, and meeting reports? We did them all at the beginning of the meeting. Having no other items, we adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry. Oral communications, final time for the public to speak, two minutes maximum.
Of course, my point was, when I was Dave Pierce and I still live in Lompoc, my point was that we're spending money to repair roads that's earmarked for transit development to getting cars off the road. In other words, this is a way of relieving the problem on our roadway, and I think we should be doing it. And the other thing is, of course, we were talking about the bicycle path. That $248,000 would be an ideal start to increase the length of the bicycle path and finish the south end of it. So there are projects that staff could come up with to use this as transit development money, but I think there must be pressure put on to save certain money aside to do road repairs because the budget's so tight. But this is truly inappropriate. The money for doing road repairs can be gotten for road repairs, but you're not going to get transportation development money this way elsewhere. You should use it for that and improve the long-term future, the history of the city, by making sure that we have a growing transit infrastructure that we're going to be required to have anyway. Might as well start what is cheap and make it as good as possible. And of course, the other side of the coin is planning wisely so that transit in the city operates at best efficiency. In other words, encourage dense development in the arteries of transit so that you don't have large numbers of people living in outlying districts, the way the urban sprawl problem first developed that we're trying to avoid. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Do we have any other public comment at this time? Seeing no one rise, we close the oral communications. We adjourn to our regular Lompoc City Council Redevelopment Agency at 7:00 p.m. on May 4th, 2010. Thank you.